Good evening, everyone. We're now just going to commence with our third and last conference on the proposed budget for FY 2022. Officials invited to attend this evening is city managers.
The city manager, Tom Ambrosino, honorable members of the city council.
Ed Dunn also included tonight. So hold on one second, I have that just now. We will have Fidel Meltas, Lou Melmalet, John De Priest, Alex Train, Mike McIntyre, Ed Dunn, already mentioned Ramon Garcia. Those are the attended, the department heads that will be joining us tonight. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Vido, absent Counselor Avizaneda.
Present.
Counselor A. Coopero, Counselor Garcia, absent Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent Counselor Robertson.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez, absent Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown, Counselor Zabid. So, okay, one, two, three, four, five, you have a call, Mr. Gem six.
Okay, so at this time, I'll let the city manager make the announcement and introduce our first panel.
So, the first item is MIS, that's on, starts on page sixty-four, sixty-five, and Ramon Garcia is the chief information officer, and he'll present his budget.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everybody today. Tonight, I have the presence of basically the entire team. It was not planned, but we are here, Angel Jorge, Steve Alsette, the manager, and myself. IT is maybe the part of the foundation of this city. Most of the businesses and processes that runs on the city depend on technology. And in terms of documents and access and everything, we are basically the custodians of what it runs and what is preserved in the city. To give you a quick idea of how much information we handle, in a typical day, for example, we process around nine, nine thousand to ten thousand emails per day. For a total of around nine million emails store on, only in Google, and we have been only a year. Total, we have around seventeen million of emails preserved here in City Hall and the police department. If you want to think about how much paper that is consuming, we have around fifty-two million pages preserved, and we are the custodians of that. If you want to dig into how many trees we are preserving by using technology, we are talking about basically a million boxes of paper that we have preserved electronically, or seventy-one thousand trees that has been preserved due to the use of technology here in the city. That is around twelve to, twelve to thirteen years of documents preserved. Why I bring the numbers is because in, as we move and technology moves, we have to implement more efficient processes to minimize the use of paper, plus making the departments more efficient. As you are going to see in my budget, there has been slight increases on, on budget and perhaps on the contract lines, as well as the procurement of new technology to make the businesses more efficient, and also towards moving then to adopting more technology. Questions in regards to budget, I mean?
So, at this moment, I'll ask the, my colleagues if they see on page sixty-five is the table for the salaries, expenses, and capital. If you have any questions, please do so at this time. Raise a hand. Any questions to the, to Ramon in charge of IT?
Well, this is the thing with computers. I mean, you can go to Best Buy, you can go to stores, and you can buy computers maybe cheaper. What we buy is business-class PCs. Those are included, has three to five years of warranty, and that adds some cost to that. Also, we include the licenses that those PCs need. So, a package here is around a thousand dollars for a PC. That's why when we go into the cycles, you're going to see that sometimes a year deadline decreases, sometimes it increases. We have been doing basically desktop replacements almost every year, just to keep up additional PCs that are needed or replacement of PCs. The cycle of a PC, to give you an idea, is between three to five years. It depends on the usage. Unfortunately, with COVID, because most of the employees had to go remote, the use of the PCs became basically the essential tool for them. Those PCs had been running basically twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So, you're going to see a tendency now that I will have to basically recycle the computers more often. One thing that you're going to see, and that is part of the, what the additional budget supplement that we ask, is that we are going to acquire a different type of technology to allow the employees to have better access remotely and not depend on the PCs on the different locations. That is going to happen within the next year. We are preparing for the future. I mean, we just went through a very tough pandemic. I don't know what is next. My duty as a CIO is to plan for the future and prevent another problem in terms of accessing technology. So, I need to be, and apply more, a technology that will be more efficient. So, fortunately, I mean, I hope that I will be able to present the details of that, about that. For time's sake, I will say that that's where the, where we are heading, that will be part of our strategy. We have to be there. So, that's why you see that, those increments.
And I would also add to that, counselors, that the hundred and ninety-five thousand that's in that category was part of the FY twenty-two CIP that was approved. So, that's a breakdown of three or four projects.
Yes. You are going to see that the top books that we buy for the police cruisers, which is around four to five a year, also their, they cycle those laptops on those cruisers. They are moving to a different type of technology as well on the cruisers. There is already three to four cruisers that have a new set of laptops on their cruisers. Also, we are adding new technology for broadband access on the cruisers. Basically, those cruisers are equipped with Wi-Fi on the cruisers. So, body cameras in the future and other type of devices will be able to connect to the cruisers. So, we are preparing that, and that's why you see on the CIP this type of increments. Also, we have to cycle our servers, the storage, as you, as I mentioned, we have a lot of documents that we need to preserve, and every year increases more and more and more, so.
Thank you.
To follow up on that question and to mention it, and it was, and it was, I'm trying an explanation that I'm looking for, as you mentioned, it's part of the CIP, but it shows up in an expense note here. So, if it's part of a bond, and it's not a, it's a, this sort of expenditure is not a one-off, but actually used for, through the CIP, how does that all balance out itself out?
Well, this, this, these particular items are not part of the bonding. These would be in a category referred to as operating budget. So, as part of the CIP, you have some that are funded from free cash, some that would be operating budget, others that would be related to bonding from either the, the general obligation bonds or the MWRA. But in this case, with these particular items, these are operating budget items, so they, they don't impact any bonding, that we would go forward with. Instead, they are part of the budget and approved as part of your, your vote.
So, if you go back to the CIP booklet, you'll see a first column that says operating budget, and some of those, of those forty odd projects that we had, there's a handful that show up in that op, as the source of funds is operating budget. And every one of those shows up in our budget because we're funding those projects out of our operating budget. I think it's about half a million dollars worth, and they show up in various places. There's a few in DPW, there's a, there's this stuff in IT. So, they're independent, this, the funding source for those projects is the operating budget. So, if you went to your, so this is a copy of the CIP, that first column says operating budget, and those items that reflect a, a funding source in there show up in this operating budget.
Okay. Any questions? Counselor Lopez, and then Counselor Taylor. And remind everyone, the, the tech crew in the back and also at home, the listeners are asking us to please speak directly into the microphone, they're having a little bit of trouble hearing us. So, if you can't hear yourself over the PA, then you're probably not talking loud enough.
On the contract service, from six twenty, three hundred twenty-two went to seven hundred seventy thousand, went up twenty-three point eight percent. Can you explain that, please?
Can you repeat the question again?
Yeah, on the, on the contract service, from six twenty-two went to seven seventy, twenty-three point eight percent.
There is an increase on Google services. Initially, when we moved to Gmail, there was an initial cost per year. Unfortunately, G, Google decided this year, within the pandemic, to increase the, the cost almost three times what we used to pay, and that is across the board. So, to give you an idea, that was initially, we paid thirty thousand dollars for a year of Gmail. Now, it's sixty-nine thousand dollars. So, that's one of the things that you see increment. Also, our financial system, which is, everybody knows as Munis, has also going to be increased from one seventy to one eighty-four. We are also adding a document management solution for the financial system this year, and that is around thirty thousand dollars increase as well. So, when you start adding all these increases in cost, that's why you see a big difference in the contract line.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Taylor, and then Counselor Vega.
You know what, he asked my question. Go ahead.
Okay, I see a hand raised by Counselor Vega. Can you hear us, and if you would like to ask a question?
I just had my hand raised simply because I couldn't hear, but now the problem is fixed. Thank you.
Okay. We were just having sound difficulties, and those who are zooming in and also in the background could not hear us, but we've solved that. Any other questions? Seeing none, okay, we'll move on to the next question.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Ramon.
Our next, per, next individual on the panel would be, I am the director, Mike McIntyre, and we are looking at page one oh six in the budget. So, if you'd like to start off by just letting us know, what would the, how did the last year go? What are the goals for this year, and the changes in the budget for the proposed 2022?
Hello, Roy. Hello, counsel. So, you know me, Director of Inspeccional Services. We do all the building inspections, housing inspections, trash tickets, rat abatements, trash work, and so on, so on. So, the year went crazy, like everybody else, but we were busy. We wrote as many tickets this year as we did every other year. Construction was busy. We even had to do more inspections because we had to do a lot of safety inspections to keep, keep it rolling on, the COVID, the COVID restrictions on the job sites, complaints, sicknesses, all those things came in. Restaurants, when they closed, when they opened, complaints, sicknesses. It was a busy year for us. I am not asking for any more money this year, other than, you know, the increases for the longevity and whatever, you know, salaries, the contractual obligations, situations like that.
So, we have regular salaries up two percent, longevity went up ten percent due to new contracts, same with unused sick bonus. Can you tell us what the, what the budget for this year, what the goals are for 2022?
Goals, ours, number one, getting back to normal. Hopefully, next week, we'll have everybody in the office. It's been really hard working remotely. We're kind of a close office, and, you know, a lot of, a lot of things that the building inspector finds out, you know, he has to share with the food inspectors, and the electrical inspectors, plumbing inspectors, all those, you know, we all kind of work as a team. So, being separated, it was really hard dispersing information to everybody. There's not enough time in a day to call everybody every day, when, you know, back in July, when we weren't in the office, but we're, we're still in the field, but the office was more or less shut down. Construction's going to go on. We, we, we have a bunch of projects starting now, twenty-five, sixth, twenty-five, Second Street, one thousand five Broadway. Hopefully, by the end of the year, the, I think in the, in the fall, probably will start up on the Housing Authority work on, on Central Ave. There's tons of construction going on. We can, excuse me. So, work's going to continue. Hopefully, housing inspections will go back to normal, and that kind of took a hit during the, during the pandemic. Other than that, everything's moving forward. We're trying to get more, we, we trying to get more streamlined on our computer system with the food inspections. Hopefully, that means more food inspections because less time in the office, send mail and out letters, and, and phone calls and everything else, because the system should do most of that for us.
Counselors, any questions? And again, reminded, please speak into the microphone. Counselor Robinson.
I see that you have two and a half building inspectors, and how does that really shake out, I, I see the amount of construction that's been happening here within, in the community.
I could definitely use more building inspectors. I have a part-time guy. He's been here for a little over a year. He's proved to be worthy. He's an excellent candidate. He works hard. He's got all his qualifications. I have plenty of work. I, I, I would love to, at some point, maybe next year, ask to, if we can bring him on full-time.
That's if he, somebody else doesn't come in and snail him.
Exactly, that's the problem. All these towns, the commissioner in Everett died of a heart attack. He was stressed out at work. Rivera, the commissioner left, that they're shorter guy, Everett's shorter guy, it's, the tests are getting harder and harder. There's just a shortage of, of building inspectors and commissioners in the, in the state. So, a lot of, I'm just afraid, you know, that could go somewhere else.
Any other questions? Any questions from the side? I noticed that there is a car allowance on the, in this, just through a question through, that was brought to me by a resident. Every single, in order to have that a car allowance, that's just a, it's not a, it's not a city car, but they have to use their own personal vehicle.
Exactly.
And a condition is, of that, is that they actually have a vehicle that they're driving and using from work, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, they all have cars, they all have insurances. We get their insurance every year to make sure that they're up to date, and kind of been going smoothly.
I also noticed, Mr. City Manager, the clothing allowance here is only four hundred compared to a thousand for nine-one-one, so it's.
It's contractual. It's in the union contracts as to how much is specified, so that's a different union.
Much more appealing than a thousand.
Nine-one-one is a Teamsters Union, and Mike's group is SEIU. So, each union has its own language.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none. Mike, good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I apologize for being late. I was under the pressure of, you know, wasting my time coming to Boston.
Oh, that's okay.
But I did need to, thank you for the work. I know it's very difficult time for you guys this past year, but thank you for stepping up and your staff.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
Our next individual to come up onto the panel is for permitting and land use, John De Priest, and that is page seventy-four.
I don't know John is here because the time was six fifty that he was supposed to be.
Yep, I know, today we're ahead.
But I guess we, unless Ned's going to say he's coming right now, I guess we could just go to Fidel. Fidel is here.
Okay, Fidel's ready.
Let's just see if John is coming.
We, we can wait, we, we just, you waited for us to eat our tacos, we'll wait for you to bring up John.
John may just be in his office downstairs. If he is, we'll wait for him. If not, we'll go.
Okay, everyone, take a two-minute break.
Two-minute break?
Yeah, we're waiting for John.
Yeah, when, when, when did it?
Remember to keep the mic in front of you when you're talking. Make sure you, yep. Oh, I forgot something.
He just went back down to get something, so he'll be right back. He had forgot something.
We are now on, we have John De Priest here from the permitting and land use planning. If you want to go over your twenty-one accomplishments and what the twenty-one, twenty-two goals are, and then speak, speak to us about the budget, proposed budget. Welcome, John.
Thank you. How are you? Sorry, I ran out a little out of breath. Would you like me to start?
Yes.
Please do, sir.
So, my name is John De Priest, I'm the director of permitting.
And try to have the microphone closer, and if we don't hear you over the PA, that means that they're not catching you back home and on Facebook either.
All right. So, I'm the director of permitting and land use planning, and as you're aware, my department is a new department that was created in July of last year. And I was given the responsibility for staffing four boards. The Conservation Commission, which is a five-member board responsible for preservation of wetland resource areas, permitting of development in wetland resource areas, and general environmental advocacy. The Historical Commission, which is a seven-member board responsible for preservation of the city's historic resources, responding to requests from people seeking comments on impacts of projects on historic resources, historic preservation advocacy, and a role in the city's demolition delay ordinance. The Planning Board, which is a nine-member board responsible for setting planning policy for the city, providing recommendations to the zoning board of appeals on special permit requests, permitting subdivision of land, and providing the council with recommendations on zoning amendments. And the Zoning Board of Appeals, which has five members and one associate member, and is responsible for reviewing development proposals and issuing special permits and variances. In addition, on a regular basis, I respond to inquiries from developers, members of the public, city personnel, relative to the boards and permitting process. I also advocate for the boards and commissions for the issues that are under their jurisdiction. I work to keep the zoning ordinance up to date with new amendments as they're approved. I work closely with the city manager's office, the city council, inspection services department, DPW, fire department, city slister, and housing and community development. I also serve as a city's representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, the local casino mitigation advisory council, and MBTA advisory board. You have the budget, and as a staff, as I staff a completely new budget, I really can't give you a summary of how it really compares with the others, because it's, it's new, but a lot of these figures were taken from the planning and development office and our, the, this year's budget was based on the budget provided by, for, provided for these activities when it was a part of the planning and development office. Costs relative to staffing, supplies, posted legal notices, and bringing our own based on the laws of previous years. So, this year, I successfully transitioned to a new department, including moving to a new office, setting up new procedures to assure that input on board activities and development proposals are received from appropriate departments and individuals, all with a minimum disruption to services. In addition, I worked to transition from in-person meetings to remote meetings, which was not as easily accomplished as the move to a new office. One of my major goals for FY twenty-three is to transition back to in-person meetings with fewer issues than the transition away, and to start televising the planning board and ZBA meetings, and to minimize any disruption to the process while doing this.
John, as the staff person to, to all the permitting boards, including ZBA and planning, so your administrator, I get out of the standard title, basically Paulette's position, it's not in your office anymore, is that a shared, how's that work?
It's a, it's a shared position. It's really, the position is based in housing and community development, but wish, she's a shared person. She provides services to the zoning board of appeals.
So, again, she's helped support those boards and commissions, the planning board and the zoning board?
Yeah, she does provide me with, she'll post the legal notices, she'll mail out packages to the planner, to the members, and post agendas and stuff like that.
Okay, and the land use administrator or land use stated vacant, is there just a slide there to, as a placeholder for some point, and what is the idea there?
The idea is to eventually fill that. That was the old Ladell position. He was the last one to occupy it, and we did not fill that when he left. Again, it was another victim of the pandemic, and we're trying to get through one more year and see how John does, but I would expect that, that is, you know, really, John's just going to be able to tread water until he can get a assistant. Now, I will, we'll point out that we, you have given him, this office does have some support. Last year, you approved a contract position, and that's the con, that's a large part of this twenty thousand contract services line item, is to hire a contract employee to help with the writing of the opinions. So, John has, I think, just about on board.
Yes.
A lawyer who will work, you know, a handful of hours a week, helping him write the official opinions for ZBA and planning board decisions, and you approved that last year. But this, this aspect of the old office always had, not just the director, but a person assisting, and the eventual goal is to fill that position. That's why we've identified it in the budget, but it will not be filled in FY twenty-two.
Any questions from any of the counselors? Counselor Brown, and again, Mr. City Manager, just remind everyone, the panel, please have the microphone as close as possible, so that people at home can hear.
So, John, I was just trying to understand a person that does the shared work. Where's her office or the office at for that person?
You're referring to the contract position?
Yes.
She will be able to work. Uh, she will be able to work from home, but there's also a desk in my office that she can use when she is here in the office.
So is that a full-time position?
No, it's, it's, uh, up to ten or so hours a week.
Okay. So, okay.
It's not an employee. It's a, it's a contractor.
Contract, yeah.
So she will attend board meetings with me?
Board meetings, poster meetings, and get notices.
Right, and write up the decisions.
Is that what the twenty thousand contract services is for?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just wasn't clear on it. Thank you.
Any questions? Either side? No? Okay. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Our elect, our next panel member is Alex Train, who will be going over the Housing and Community Development, which is on page seventy-seven. So Alex, when you're ready, if you want to just, uh, open up and start your, state your name and the, go over the budget.
Excellent. Thank you, Council, and good evening, everyone. So my name's Alex Train. I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development. We have a variety of goals with this year's budget. The department's mission is really grounded in serving residents in terms of their social, physical, environmental, and economic needs through a range of project delivery, planning, and policy analysis that seeks to improve the quality of life of the community and promote local economic sustainability. So in the coming years, we have goals focused on reducing the displacement of existing residents, promoting sustainable economic growth, including living wage job creation and the attraction of new businesses in high-growth sectors. Moreover, we're deepening our investments in preparedness for climate change. So this includes the establishment of a new office of climate resiliency and sustainability, which will tackle climate issues at the regional level with Revere and Winthrop, provide us with not just the staff horsepower, but the expertise necessary to reduce the risks of flooding, mitigate urban heat, and lessen the impacts of air quality and other harmful pollutants in the community. On the community development side, you know, we're continuing to advance a variety of initiatives designed to increase economic mobility and self-sufficiency amongst the community. These include a comprehensive childcare initiative, food security programming, and programs designed for at-risk youth and families that can help them weather the crisis of the COVID- nineteen pandemic. And then lastly, you know, we're continuing to further a wide range of infrastructure investments in the coming year, which include reconstruction of major arteries such as the Beecham-Williams Corridor and the Upper Broadway Corridor in partnership with Commissioner Maltese and the Department of Public Works, as well as undertaking neighborhood improvements that affect residents' day-to-day lives. These will include upgrading intersections to better manage congestion, improving deteriorated sidewalks to increase accessibility, and connect neighborhoods in with the Central Business District, and improving safety of neighborhoods and roadways throughout the city for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers. Our infrastructure approach not only tackles the physical elements of infrastructure, but it also spans housing and what we call social infrastructure, which focuses on investing in the systems and the community networks necessary to foster resilience, which is particularly important as we seek to recover from the COVID- nineteen pandemic. So as you'll note in our budget, we are proposing one additional staff person for this upcoming year, which is an administrative position really designed to bolster our project delivery and program management capabilities as we take on many of these new initiatives and meet the rising demand, you know, manifested by COVID- nineteen. All in all, the remainder of our budget, including contract services and other overhead and operating expenses, remains relatively consistent with the former Planning and Development Budget and is adequate to meet the needs of our staff and ensure that we can provide a high-quality service to residents and remain responsiveness to their needs. So with that, I've provided a short presentation as well as a summary of our grant management activity over the upcoming year. So if any councilors have questions or if we can provide clarification, I'm happy to do so or I'm happy to meet with you after this session. Thank you.
At this time, I'll invite any questions from the council. Are there any questions? Consul Lopez.
With the citizenship program, uh, who teach this citizenship program? And, uh, and how many people have received that or have been benefited from that program?
That's a great question. So each year, we receive funding for the Citizenship and Immigration Program through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And per those grant requirements, we issue a request for proposals. Presently, the contract is held by the Chelsea Collaborative, who teaches and administers the program. At a minimum, on an annual basis, we're to serve at least thirty-five low- and moderate-income residents. In most years, we're serving around seventy, although this past year it was slightly below that at approximately sixty-five residents.
Who teach the, as you said?
Uh, the Chelsea Collaborative.
So any citizens of Chelsea who want to become a citizen, do they have to pay for this program?
Um, there is a, there is a modest fee for the program, but if they don't have the economic means to cover the fee, the program is based upon need, so they would still be able to participate.
Thank you.
Any questions? Um, Alex, I'd like to ask a question here. It says, uh, strategic objectives in economic development. Particularly, this is a theme that our subject matter that has been discussed with my colleagues. It talks about the small businesses and entrepreneurs. And I'm just curious, on your organizational structure, am I to understand, I ask you and the City Manager, so is economic development in this department, this is the department that will be in charge, or?
Yes.
And prior to this, was it still, would you say, that this was still, the economic development was out of this office?
Was previously out of Planning and Community Development, yes.
Okay. So when you, when you say, when I see the organizational structure and it says community economic development, I just want to make sure, who, who, who is the individual? Is that, on, on the personnel, I see Economic Development Specialist Carl Allen. Is that the case? So it's Carl. Okay. So, uh, my, my question is, while we have, uh, some work had been done, particularly, I would say, in the last year with the small businesses, when it comes to larger businesses, um, we question, what, what has been the strategy? Can you name some accomplishments that come to mind of large employers that have come into the city of Chelsea? And what was the strategy and what were those businesses for instances? Because, and going forward, what is the game plan to attract large employers, whether it be fifty-plus employers into the city of Chelsea? What is the game? Because again, I, I know that we had a, um, a tax incentive for certain areas in the city of Chelsea, but in those areas, the overlay, nothing really opened up. And, you know, jokingly, long-term councilors such as myself and Leo say to us, I was, we haven't been to too many ribbon-cutting ceremonies in a while. And I come from a time when we would have regular TIFs awarded. Companies were relocating to this area, particularly on Crescent Ave. And, you know, I want to say in the last four or five years, there's been a lack of that. And I don't want to talk about the marijuana business because that was just separate all to itself and that's statewide and there's a run. But what is the plan? And are, is there recruitment, meetings, and so forth to talk to large employers or companies to relocate here? And if so, when we may, when we may see some of the benefits of those meetings and strategy?
That's an excellent question. So just to begin, you know, the underpinning element of our economic development strategy is to really focus on the assets that Chelsea possesses. So as you know, those assets include our geography, our workforce, and our connectivity between Boston and the greater region via the highway and the regional transit network. So presently, we are in the process of preparing a business attraction and retention campaign. So this summer, we've actually increased, uh, intern funding in our proposed budget to put together updated marketing materials for the city as well as to coordinate a sort of multifaceted campaign to attract medium-scale to large-scale employers. The occupation and industry sectors that we're, we're focusing on include the distribution and transportation industries, given the proximity to Logan and given the high wages that they provide. The biomanufacturing industry, again, given the proximity to Logan and given the wages and job pathways that are present for residents, as well as some of the traditional sort of smaller manufacturers. You know, one of the, the hard realities right now is that in places like Chelsea and the inner core, the industrial property that we're, we're seeing is really a goldmine in that property values have increased so sharply as have rents. So many traditional manufacturers can no longer afford to, to site their facilities in locations like Chelsea. These types of distribution, biomanufacturing, as well as even the marijuana industry per se, can't afford the, the prices per square foot in these industries and they are really reliant on the proximity to the Boston region and, and the airport. So although we haven't presented any commercial TIFs in, in quite a while, you know, we do approach each negotiation and each project with a full suite of tools, including local and state economic development tools. Over the course of the last year, you know, we've been heavily engaged with the Twenty-Two Willow Project. That is a hundred thousand-plus-square-foot facility that'll house at least three tenants. They've committed to employing residents at living wage jobs and have addressed many of the city's concerns relative to traffic and air pollution. The second notable project that's still undergoing planning, but will begin to materialize in the coming year, is the Two-Ninety-Five Eastern Ave redevelopment. Again, that is a approximately hundred thousand-square-foot light industrial redevelopment that will focus on the transportation, warehousing, and logistics sectors. So our geographic areas of focus right now are really the waterfront as well as the Beecham-Williams Corridor for that type of traditional industry. You know, we're actively engaging with existing firms to retain the food manufacturing and distribution industries and undertaking economic development projects like the Beecham-Williams Corridor in order to ensure that infrastructure is adequate to support those companies' needs. So by the end of this summer, you know, we'll be happy to share these updated marketing materials that I mentioned. But over the course of the next three months, we really are going to be doubling down on the business attraction front in order to entice new companies that can anchor employment to come to Chelsea and employ local residents.
Have you heard anything? We've lost a major employer with Signature Foods. So what is the expectation there? Any, any feedback from the owners of what their intent is in that large building?
Yeah, so the owner of Signature Bread at Westbrook Partners recently acquired it. They haven't divulged the specific tenant or specific industry that's going into that site, but they have disclosed that they are targeting biomanufacturing, cold storage, and produce processing and distribution. We have expressed an openness to the biomanufacturing and the food-related industries. In terms of cold storage, because it employs such a small number of folks, we've advised them against that type of use there. But they're still in the process of specking out a rehabilitation scheme for the property, completing capital upgrades, and searching for a tenant. So we work with them relatively regularly between our economic development discussions as well as the ongoing infrastructure work across that property. So I would expect in the next six to eight months that that property would find a new tenant that would be moving in there to support the local economy.
Any questions? Consul Brown and then Consul Robinson.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work you've done. I know this year you guys were like every day out there. Your staff was filling in, supporting the nonprofit organization, supporting the local economy here, helping with, as your document states here.
Consul, can you just speak a little closer to the microphone? Thank you.
So I really truly appreciate the work. I know a lot of the city councils showed up when we were able to, but you guys were out there every day, especially during the heat of the pandemic. Can you tell me, because I know you guys also took on a big responsibility with the housing, and we always hear affordable housing and, you know, a lot of the last projects has been up and operational. A lot of our residents are saying they're not affordable. Can you tell us a little about some of your goals and some of your attraction for affordable housing?
Absolutely. And this is a, one of my, my, personally, one of my favorite subjects. So we have, I would say, a number of goals pertaining to affordable housing. So to address the point that you made about whether affordable housing is truly affordable for Chelsea residents, this is an important one, not only for our department, but also for our Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board and Community Preservation Committee. As many of you know, there can be affordable housing produced at, you know, different affordability levels that are still out of reach for many residents here. So on the rental housing side, we've prioritized developing and preserving affordable housing that is aligned with the median income in Chelsea, meaning folks who live in Chelsea, who bring home wages to Chelsea, can truly afford it without being housing cost-burdened and paying a disproportionate amount of their income to that housing. We're also pursuing numerous preservation strategies as over the next five to ten years, hundreds of units will be expiring in the greater region. So we're actively negotiating with property owners to try to preserve those affordable units, extend their affordability, and even deepen their affordability so they can serve lower-income individuals. Lastly, on the homeownership side, which is a important strategic objective of our departments, particularly as it relates to addressing racial and economic disparities, especially in the housing market, we're pursuing a neighborhood-scale development program as well as different homeowner and homebuyer programs to both provide the, you know, capital necessary to purchase homes as well as to produce an adequate supply of homeownership units that are affordable for, for Chelsea residents. So with the pandemic winding down right now, as you all know, tenants and homeowners alike have both been economically stressed. And we are seeing, you know, a pretty dramatic rise in the number of evictions, and we do suspect that foreclosures will also increase in the near future. So our last major objective is to ensure that the city and our department's prepared to respond to that type of situation, which to respond to that type of situation, which could entail acquiring new property with community-based partners like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, and converting it to affordable housing that's deeply affordable for Chelsea residents, has supportive services, and can be connected in with some of the workforce development programming and job readiness programming that we're sponsoring.
So I know that the council, the city council also made some appropriations available for affordable housing, and also with the displacement and also evictions trying to prevent. Can you tell me a little bit about the work? You helped out with that?
Absolutely. So at the, back in December, when the moratorium and the uptick in evictions was really starting to spiral out of control, we convened an eviction task force and established an emergency housing program, which was honestly the first emergency housing program that the city's really, you know, spearheaded. The program's designed to ensure close coordination with housing agencies. We have structured support, including rental assistance, mortgage assistance, as well as intensive case management. So we focus on both preserving tenancies through legal service, rental assistance, so households can remain stably housed in their home. And then for households that are unfortunately evicted, we provide emergency case management with trained social workers and housing case managers, as well as a temporary emergency shelter, which is particularly important for households in Chelsea that don't qualify for state or federal shelters, which oftentimes are individuals, given the limited individual shelter options across the Commonwealth. So to date, we've assisted about 40, I would say roughly 40 households. That's equivalent to approximately 120 individuals who have either been evicted and have received case management services or shelter, or who we've been able to keep stably housed in their home. So the eviction task force meets every Monday. We coordinate closely with community-based partners, the state and federal agencies, and it is our plan to continue the project until, you know, circumstances change and conditions stabilize on the ground.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Robinson?
Being that you were on the housing case, it's come to my attention, we have employees who work in the city who are actually making about $60,000 a year and can't afford to buy a house still here in Chelsea. And I think there's some mechanism that we need to be able to address that somehow. And whether or not we have to go back to the affordable housing ordinance, to put something in there to be able to protect our residents and being able to keep residents here. And I, and one of my p's is being discouraged by seeing people coming in and asking for waivers to move out of the city. And I think that's become a strain, I think, to me and my members on this council. So we're looking for a mechanism to, you know, how to address that. If you have any feedback you want to give back in regards to that.
Absolutely. That's a, that's a good question. So I guess the two, the two suggestions I would provide broadly, and then we're happy to meet and discuss this in detail. So the first, it relates to prioritizing specific populations that are vulnerable in our existing inclusionary housing program, as well as through other affordable housing opportunities. So for instance, under our inclusionary housing program, for affordable units that are produced either condos or rentals, during the marketing and the lottery process, we actually provide a preference for current municipal employees, as well as families and extremely low-income individuals. So we are open to exploring strengthening that provision. The second part of this, though, becomes a supply question, and it's interlinked with our goals of producing new affordable housing, where we are actively pursuing the creation of new affordable homeownership opportunities that would be appropriate for households at the income that you're citing. And the process for applying for those and/or purchasing those can be structured to prioritize those municipal employees.
My, my other question was to piggyback off of something that the council president asked. What are the parameters that Signature Bread decided to leave Chelsea, being that we went overboard in bringing them here to Chelsea? Any particular reasons why they chose to leave our community?
By overboard, you mean offering them or approving TIF? Okay.
Yeah.
They were a previous recipient of a TIF. So we didn't hear why. So I think that's the question that they're asking. Why, why did, what was the reason given, or if they were provided, if we were provided, i.e. the city manager, a reason why they had just shut down and left?
So there were two main reasons that Signature Bread and their ownership group conveyed to us for the closure. You know, the first was one of finance, where the company was not in terribly good financial health even before the pandemic. And the pandemic really set them over the edge as they saw the vast majority of their market, which is hotels, restaurants, airlines, as you know, dry up abruptly overnight. And because of those financial difficulties, you know, they really couldn't withstand and continue operating until the pandemic receded. You know, the second issue is one of economics that I alluded to earlier, which is that at some point in Chelsea, in 2021, many of these industrial properties are actually more valuable than the businesses inside of them. So there are some, you know, economically rational actors that are, you know, pursuing their shareholders or their company's best interests, but not necessarily the community's best interest, making decisions involving real estate. I think in the case of Signature, it was a mix of the two. It was their business dried up due to the pandemic, and they were sitting on an asset that was worth more than $50 million, and that was worth more than the business, so they decided to sell.
I think that second point, I think that second point was at least as important and perhaps more important than the first point. They may have stuck it out if they didn't have an asset that was so incredibly lucrative to them to sell.
If that's the case, and I agree with you, that land costs or the prices of the areas are not matching what the lands, the values of the properties are right now. We saw in South Boston, the area, the area where the former Boston Herald was located, Boston Herald was located, Electronic Contractor was located there, not Pantadossi, Quinssani's Bakery was located there. All of that got knocked down and totally redeveloped into housing and commercial. We saw what happened, what is going on with the Seaport. Again, areas that were mainly industrial, some Seaport, parking lots, maybe some office use, residential use, commercial. We're seeing what is going on with Everett. Can complete the values of it being next to the Route 16, the redevelopment from junkyards, metal shop yards into less commercial, and again, large residential complexes along the Parkway. We saw this on the tri-city area on Commercial Street and Medford, along Wellington Street. There was a thought there that they would build Dotcom Passage, and instead, you go there today, and it is a row of large apartment complexes due to its proximity to Wellington. Knowing that, seeing that, all that trend, particularly when it came to the waterfront, there was a proposal, an inheritance to keep what has never been industrial or waterfront usage, stayed in, cooked in, thinking that, I don't know, you're bucking the trend. Somehow Chelsea was going to buck the trend, and that it was going to maintain types of uses that we are not seeing anywhere else. And today I'm hearing that what we saw, you agree now, that there isn't that industrial uses. Industrial uses are going to cheaper places further outside of Boston, particularly when you have the complete 175 tax rate shift in our community on taxes in any of the new building. So again, I have to wonder, what is the thinking? Because I hear conflict between what was asked to be zoned and what is actually happening, and will we ever see the proposals that is currently zoned for in that area or in any area? You know, how many times are we going to see a Willow Street project or 295 project? Basically, we had to wait for certain buildings to be over 100 years old before they're actually thought. So I, you know, when I look at a building like the Spring Air mattress that was empty for nearly three years, a whole block, only now is being filled in. What is it being filled with? A refrigeration and sort of operation. That's what it is. You know, the, I can't think of the lettuce company, whatever, Spring Lettuce, whatever it is.
Spring Air.
What is it?
Spring Air.
No, no. The produce company from down the street basically is taking it over and is a giant, Garden State. Typically not the type of use, and I'll bring this back later, the value, the assessed value of that property is about $75 a square foot, which is ridiculously low. Another question that'll be, I'm sticking to residential, but this is multi. I, you know, again, I know this is not the time, and we will have a meeting about this. I don't understand what the economic strategy is, because when I look back, the last five years, we're not seeing it. We're not seeing the companies come in, we're not seeing the buildings that be, should be done. And when we see the trend all around us of industrial use being converted because there's just not a good future in it, and yet we seem to be clinging on to certain paths or a bucking the trend. So I'd like to understand what the strategy is at times.
I think we see value in maintaining our industrial uses and our industrial buildings, that there is opportunity there as these, as these locations dwindle more and more, as you say. As these industrial areas get turned into residential areas, I think there is going to be a demand for these buildings. I think that's why the prices of some of these industrial buildings are so exorbitant because there's so few of them left. So I feel the city does have an opportunity with its industrial portfolio here to generate a lot of decent-paying jobs. And it's why we have strived in most areas. Now, old junkyards are different. I, I'm not opposed to rezoning to allow for some residential use in areas that have historically been old kind of dumpy junkyards, hence the sort of redevelopment you see at Fairfield and our reason for creating this mixed-use overlay district for some of those surrounding parcels. But in areas that have historically been industrial, like Signature Bread, like 22 Willow, even 295, where they were a waterfront district, they had a right to build residential. We told them the city will not support any residential development on this parcel. We want commercial development here because we're trying to create jobs. I, you know, and you can just, I realize reasonable minds can disagree on this, but I think, I firmly believe, and I think it's a belief shared by others here in my administration, that there is a value in maintaining our industrial portfolio because there are businesses, these, these industrial sites are becoming fewer and fewer. And we do feel there's an opportunity to bring businesses here that can provide good-paying jobs. Yes, it's been sort of fallow the last couple of years, and particularly since COVID hit. But I think in the future, there's opportunity here, and I would not be inclined to turn everything over to residential development. And I think 295 may be a good example. Of course, nothing's happened yet, but I think that's a place where the proposed development is one that we like, and it could end up being favorable to the city. And it's a site that, in the alternative, could have went for residential development. It's certainly a use that's allowed by right in that waterfront.
Well, I think we only have, like, I think, two years left on the tax incentive program that was started under Trump. So at this point, you know, the, if it goes fur, you know, at this point, we were ahead of the game four years ago, hoping that, that would have brought, incentivized a business in. And, you know, I hate to see, in order to make something happen, have to use a TIF, and the sunset happens on the tax incentive that is federally there.
I think, I, I don't want to be chasing federal tax rules because they can change in a heartbeat. You know, the Biden administration could come up with some other theory to generate economic development in economically-challenged communities. You know, who knows what's going to happen federally on the tax code? I, again, I, I think there's value in maintaining our industrial portfolio and trying to keep it as industrial.
And just to build off that, and I, I think the barometer, the metric to really look at too in this instance is industrial and commercial rents and industrial, commercial vacancy rates in, in places like Chelsea and the urban ring. You know, rents continue to go upward. It was, they were exacerbated by COVID-19 and the rapid shift to e-commerce. But we have one of the lowest vacancy rates here for industrial property in terms of vacant buildings that are rentable and ready for lease-up. The next year, we're going to be undertaking actually a comprehensive study of the area around Market Basket, Spring Air, Second Street, and that commercial and industrial district, to develop strategies for repositioning a lot of those tired, old assets that you're referring to. You know, in some instances, residential might be the way to go, but in other instances, the value is really inherent there for commercial and industrial. And ultimately, you know, a city that doesn't have a commercial industrial tax base is shifting all of that tax burden onto the backs of homeowners and onto the backs of small landlords. So we're really cognizant of that, you know, that we have to strike a balance and ensure that we're both generating jobs, but also generating sustainable revenue for the city that's not disproportionately impacting existing residents.
Seeing no other questions, I'm sorry, sorry, Councilor Taylor, I apologize.
So I'm just looking at the handout that you just gave to us, and there's $46 million, over $46 million in grant-funded projects under management, correct? So I'm looking at this. First of all, before I start, I do want to commend you for the job that you guys did this last year. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, you guys were unbelievable, and I really appreciate it, and, and so do a lot of other people. So thank you. You know, as we're having this conversation, it seems to me that we have under 10% of this $46 million going to economic development. We've got more, more resources going to the climate resilience and environmental, twice as much, more than twice as much, to housing and anti-displacement, and almost an equal amount of public social services. So I guess what I'm saying is that, are we, are we not concentrating enough on economic development so as to try to kind of round out the equation here and, and try to, try to really provide, you know, better-paying jobs, more jobs for our residents here in Chelsea, so they will, you know, we're not always behind, we're not always under the gun trying to provide more and more and more and more affordable housing when, if we had better economic opportunities in the city, there may not be such a need for it. So I guess what I'm saying is, are we, are we really, is this really the best strategy to adopt, where as if we're, I don't see this, I see this as very reactive and not particularly proactive in, in an economic sense? So could you, could you speak to that a little bit? And, and, you know, I know that there's a need for these things, but it seems a little out of balance to me.
Sure. That's a, that's a good question. So in terms of the breakdown that's presented here... So in terms of the breakdown that's presented here, in the infrastructure category, which is on its own, isolated, there are numerous projects that the city and the city administration really see as crucial to economic development and unlocking economic potential. So Beecham Street's a great example of that, where you have had deteriorated infrastructure for over two decades. That impedes commerce, that drives business out of that district where they're flocking to communities with upgraded infrastructure and newer offerings. So although the economic development programs and projects category, as you indicate, is smaller than housing and, and infrastructure, infrastructure plays a huge role in this where those investments are, are generating dividends, not just now, but 10, 15, 20 years down the road. You know, so as, as the director of this department, I'm, I'm not going to sit here and say, we don't need more resources for economic development. We absolutely do, right? There are very, very limited resources at the state level for economic development. That includes tax incentives, that includes, you know, funding for site readiness and preparation and other transactions involving private property. You know, the state prioritizes, as you know, transportation, infrastructure and other, other uses. And a lot of the economic development falls squarely on the, the shoulders of municipalities. So I would strongly advocate for, you know, increasing local resources for business attraction.
My point. So, so I guess, you know, this just, this just seems to me, you know, we, we, a lot, oftentimes I think we become so focused on the problem that exists now here. And so we're always in, in a reactive, you know, position in the city. And I think that for, you know, for better management of the city and, and trying to, trying to look ahead and be proactive, and I understand the infrastructure component, and you're absolutely right. I, I was hoping that you were going to give some examples of that just for the public so they can, they can understand, you know, how, how some of these infrastructure things, you know, pay off for, for attracting other, other economic players into, into the city.
Absolutely. So there's a, in the urban planning world, there's a famous economist, his name's Ashauer, he's from the St. Louis Fed, and he did this famous analysis back in the eighties that looked at infrastructure spending and economic development and saw that for every $1 spent or invested on infrastructure, it generates almost $2 in economic growth or an economic impact. So not only does roads, utilities mean that businesses can conduct commerce, access their sites, serve the clientele of the customers that they're using, but the sort of underground infrastructure, like high-speed internet, for instance, is absolutely imperative nowadays. So on many of these larger arteries, we're not just aesthetically improving them and enhancing their safety, but we're preparing them for larger scale redevelopment that could happen over the next decade. And doing it at a pace and at a quality that quite honestly doesn't occur in a lot of surrounding municipalities because of Chelsea's unique characteristics, because we still have dense industrial corners of the city and because we're so close to Logan and, and the geographic region.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Kicking this can down the road here. When I hear these developers come in and want to develop affordable housing and they keep saying that 70% of Chelsea residents will be eligible to get in these buildings. I'm kind of wondering, is it the overall project or the subsidies that are set aside for those developments? I don't know if you might have that answer.
Yeah, so it, that 70% rule is tied in with many federal and state funding sources, as you know. So it applies to the units that are financed with those federal or state subsidies. So as you know, affordable housing buildings can consist of multiple different funding sources, each with their own restrictions and each with their own terms. So in the instance of most federal programs, that requirement pertains to the units that are subsidized with the federal funding source.
Okay, so if it's 10 units, that, that would be the 10 units. I'd say, I, I was doing a project for 40 units and 10 of those were connected with the federal dollars or state dollars, then those 10 units set aside would be those units that 70% of Chelsea people would actually get into.
Exactly. So the breakdown would apply to the 10 units that are subsidized by federal funding. Let's say hypothetically, the other units are paid for by the city. You can do 100% for, you know, local preference to serve residents.
All right, that, that answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Alex.
Great, thank you.
We're five minutes ahead of schedule. Our next invitee to the panel on the budget is the DBW Commissioner Fidel Malitez. He had to talk about the DBW administration, streets and sidewalks, snow removals, solid waste, structures and grounds, and central billing and research.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for having me. I, I know all of you, some of you extremely well. I've been with the city of Chelsea for, for just over four years, two of those years as commissioner. You know, we, we have the, the, the pride and joy of, of, of living in, in the city of Chelsea and, and raising our, our two girls. You know, we, we really have made, made Chelsea a, a, a regular part of our lives, whether it's on, on weekend events or, or just answering late night calls. So it, it is, it is my pride and joy to, to hold this position for the city of Chelsea. So tonight, I'll go through the, the DPW budget. As you know, DPW is, is broken down into eight divisions. So instead of introducing them all at once, I'll start with, with the first one, which is the, the administration budget, which is on page 115. So the administration budget is essentially what, what is housed here in, in City Hall. It, it contains the, the administrative staff, myself, Luma Molet, our, our business manager. And importantly, it also funds our, our Chelsea 3-on-1 office. So Chelsea 3-on-1 was, was launched in, in February of last year. So, so it, it was very timely. We, we launched it actually right before the pandemic and, and very quickly, we, we were able to, to, to staff up that office to, to operate 12 hours a day, seven days a week. Chelsea 3-on-1 received calls about food. They coordinated dropping off of, of food packages. And even now, they're, they're helping with, with, with the COVID vaccine rollout. So just to walk you through the, the expenses which are shown on, on, on page 117, as you can see, our, our, our overall salary is down 2.6%. The, the unused SIG bonus, which is a contractual item, i- is, is up, but it, it's a relatively small dollar amount, which means that our, our overall salary is down 2.2%. On the expenses side, I just wanted to, to highlight that there's, there's one item which, which, which seems big, and it's the, the equipment maintenance line. The reason why that's increased is because we, we added a, a new copier at the city yard. So for many years, they, they didn't have a copier and would rely on, on driving to City Hall to, to make photocopies. So that's not an efficient use of time, obviously. And on the, the personnel side, you'll see on one, page 118. Any questions on that?
Nope. Continue.
Great, thank you. So we will move on now to, to streets and sidewalks. So, so just to explain what this division is, essentially is, is a 21 employees who, who work every day out of the city yard. So these are the guys who, who are out there and do the plowing in, in the winter. They are, are the ones who, who install the street signage and are the ones who, who respond to, to the calls about random trash in, in our streets. So just to, to walk you through the, the, the budget on page 120, as you can see, we, we increased the, the salary by 2.6%. We don't have a, a, any additional headcount. That is purely contractual. Longevity is exactly the same. We, we are, that is going up significantly because of a lot of, our employees are, are reaching that, that, that milestone of 10 years at which they're, they're eligible for longevity. Same thing with licenses and, and same thing with, with unused SIG bonus. On the expense side, there's a few items that I wanted to, to highlight. One, of course, is, is park lighting. What, what transpired last summer is that we, we had to keep a lot of lights, lights on in, in parks, like, like Vogel Park in particular because of the fireworks. And, and, and we're seeing that, that, that the cost of electricity in, in our parks i- is going up. So we, we are projecting for that, to continue into next year. The, the next line that I want to highlight i- is, is maintenance citywide. That is up 10%. And I do want to highlight that, that our FY21 budget was, was cut significantly and we did it because of, of the COVID-19 pandemic. So we're, we're essentially asking, you know, to, to, to bring that back to what it used to be in, in FY20. Trees is such of those lines. Historically, trees was, was funded, you know, very largely, as you can see, our, our, our FY20 actual expenditure was, was substantial. But in, in FY21, we, we cut it down to the bare minimum of, of $5,000. So all we're asking is to, you know, is to bring that up a little bit. Again, so the, the overall expense budget seems large, but, but it, it's, it's, it's items that, that we consider essential and, and it's really what, what a residency. It's, it's street signs, it, it's asphalt on the streets. You know, there's no, no kicking balloons here. It's all real stuff.
Counsel Zabbert?
Yeah. So given the fact that the proposal by our city manager was not passed by the city council in terms of hiring seasonal workers to clean up the city, which is of major concern to me. Looking at your budget, if you just, in very basic terms, asked for more money, for more workers, would we then have the capability to be able to effectively clean up the city, which includes the streets, the sidewalks, the parks, the residential, industrial, the downtown Broadway? And if in fact that would enable DPW to do that with the combined help of ROKA and whomever else is employed, if it's whomever that is? If that is the case, have you done that in the past and have not been approved? Or are, have, are you just not asking for that, what seems like extra money to be able to hire the workforce that you need in order to keep the streets clean?
I think Alex answered a, a similar question by saying, could we use more? Absolutely. We can definitely use more, but, but we're trying to balance, you know, all of the, all of the, the demands on our departments and, and the overall expense of, of the city, right? So, so in this budget, DPW actually asked for a few new, if you knew staff in, in water and sewer in particular. And could we have more employees? Absolutely. It's just the, the, we feel that, that right, right now is not the right time to, to, to ask for those. We're, we're coming out of, of, of the global pandemic, you know, the, the, the financial future is uncertain. You know, I think if, in FY23, if, if the city finances rebound to what they were pre-COVID-19, that's definitely something that I would, I would like to request.
Well, if I could just add to that. So the commission and I have had a lot of discussions about this. I think both of us recognize that our, maintenance of our parks in particular is not what either one of us would like it to be. We proposed that proposal, which was rejected. I have an alternative proposal to the council to sort of get us through the next six months, which is just to hire a landscaper to focus exclusively on our parks. But, you know, the long-term solution is to have a parks division. That's three men and a supervisor, three people and a supervisor. Many cities have a parks division. The city I was previously at had a parks division. They only work on parks and they keep the parks maintained. And it may be that at some point, that's what I'm going to propose to this council, but it's not for fiscal year '22. I'm, I've got an alternative before you to sort of try to get us through this park season, which would be putting out a contract for a landscaper who would focus exclusively, his company, hopefully a Chelsea one, that would focus exclusively on maintaining our parks through the end of the season.
And you, excuse me, there's one, one item I wanted to also mention related to the capital budget. I should have mentioned this before you opened for questions, but if you call, I'll call your attention to the capital budget. There's $150,000 for stormwater management and then $54,000 for the vehicle. This goes back to the earlier discussion we had with Ramon Garcia on the CIP. And so these are also two items in the operating budget in this streets and sidewalks budget that are not part of the bonding. And you had approved that in your FY22 CIP. So these two, the 150 and the 54,000, they're on page 121 at the bottom of page. Those are capital projects that were approved as part of your CIP.
Just to be sure, just to clarify, clarify, the two parks, possibly three. So Vogel Park is not under your jurisdiction?
Vogel. It is. Yes, it is.
It is?
Vogel Park is, yep.
Okay. So that's not, but the, the field itself in the back, Chelsea High School Field is not?
Chelsea High School is not. The Carter Field is not.
Marysey Burke Complex, the former Merritt Park is not?
It is not.
The baseball field is not within your jurisdiction?
The baseball field, no, it is not.
It is not.
Marysey Burke is not.
Any other park area that the school department is in charge of other than that?
No. I mean, they're, they're, they're small tot lots that are, are linked to their, their buildings, but that's it.
And just for, to point out, the contract services that we've mentioned in the past with ROKA, is that under your contracts division and where is that?
So that is actually in, in the contract services line of, of streets and sidewalks.
On streets and sidewalks?
Yep.
We haven't gotten there yet, so.
Yeah.
But that's where we're at.
It's actually on, on, on page 121. So that's where, where we are. So, so the, the line that, that says contract services and it's funded for $145,000. That is the contract from, from ROKA, but, but it's actually funded at, at $150,000 in, in FY22. Is, we, we split out $5,000 of that to, to water and sewer.
And can you explain again, because this is all part of the great, you know, the larger question when we're talking about services and cleaning the streets. And so here's a line item for $145,000 and. And so, here's a line item for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and the request is, what exactly role do they play in the overall cleanliness of the city of Chelsea? What are we getting for the one-forty-five?
Yeah. So, uh, uh, Roca, uh, reports to the city yard four days a week, right? A- a- and they, uh, give us a, 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 a timesheet that we, we sign and, and approve. So, we're only charged for those, those employees that actually, uh, show up. So, it, it's an hourly rate that we estimate at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, uh, for that a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, uh, dollars a year, we receive one supervisor, right, who, 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 who drives the, the, the youth around, uh, a- and, and also, uh, four to five, uh, employees that, uh, we assign to, you know, to, to street cleanings. We, we assign them to, to, uh, 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 picking up trash in the parks, uh, a- a- and, and we assign them to, to, to areas where, you know, where, where it might be, uh, a little troublesome for us to get into, like, uh, like, like the, the Chestnut Street parking lot, uh, or, or, um, the, the area behind the Home Depot, which, which is an area that it, that we could, we get calls about all the time.
Is this, uh, you said it's four days a week?
It is four days a week.
And, uh, you basically say there's one supervisor and four employees?
Typically.
And is it a full-day work?
Yes, it is.
So, eight hours?
Yep, eight hours.
Okay, so, and is it, uh, full year or is it seasonal?
No, i- it's a full year. I mean, and they, they, uh, when it snows, we, we assign them to, to shovel, you know, the, the, the public buildings. You might see them around, you know, the, the police station a- 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 and they, they help us with, 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 uh, keeping up with snow in the winter as well.
So, you said five. It's four plus one supervisor.
Four, uh, that's typical. I mean, we, we got timesheets that, that, but on average, it's four.
Watching to make sure, I mean, not, the supervisor is an act, is the supervisor, if you will observe them, do they actually participate in the work? Or are they just typically a supervisor watching from a van and so forth? I mean, if you observe, observe them?
Yes, so, so the, the supervisor's name is Brandon. I mean, he, he, uh, a- and it, I just want to emphasize that, that, um, the, uh, keeping the, the, these, these employees, you know, uh, motivated, in line, right? I mean, a, a, uh, um, you know, Roca's, Roca's program i- i- is, is to, is to provide, you know, uh, an opportunity for troubled youth, right? So, so the, the supervisor is critical. I mean, they, they, uh, they're who, um, who we talk to i- i- if, if we see something that is, that is off, uh, a- a- and it's Brandon. I mean, he, he's been, uh, uh, doing the program for a long time and he's, he's a great asset. Uh, and, and you'll see that. I mean, they, they come to the yard, uh, uh, every morning in, in a white van. They, they are, uh, uh, required to wear the, the brown Roca shirt, a- a- and you'll see them in the parks.
We see them in the parks. So, my question here is, again, trying to get the most bang for the buck. You're talking about just the four guys on a four-day schedule, eight hours a day. That's a hundred and twenty-eight man-hours a week hitting the parks. Um, I'm just curious, why the, why are our parks in such bad condition if we have a crew of four guys plus a supervisor going around cleaning our parks and spending a hundred and twenty-eight hours a week?
You know, we.
And that, you, there's a suggestion by the administration that we need to spend an additional two-hundred thousand dollars to take care of something that isn't being taken care of by the a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar contract?
I would say that's an inadequate amount of money to care for parks in a city of this size. Let's just, you know, look at any other city our size, they're spending a lot more money in park maintenance than we are. I'm, I'm telling you that you don't spend enough money in park maintenance, and I would advocate that we should spend more. I did not include it in this budget, but it may be something I recommend to this council at a later date.
Uh, Councilor Taylor had his hand up first and then Councilor Brown.
So, just, just following up on this issue, um, and, and to continue the theme from the last, uh, department head that we talked to. The importance of being proactive, I think, is, is really kind of, uh, something that, that, that I would like the city to, to try to really adopt, a, a real mindset of being proactive. So, here's a, here's a good example. Two Sundays ago, there was a softball game or baseball game in Vogel Park, okay? I walk my dog every morning. I take my kid to the bus. I take my dog and I walk around my district just to look and see what's happening. I, I always go to Vogel Park and on that, on that following Monday, it was a mess. Beer cans everywhere. First of all, you're not allowed to drink in the park, right? But if you're going to drink in the park, I mean, throw your damn cans away, okay? Get rid of the evidence. Um, nobody cares. It was a mess. So, why can't we, why can't the city anticipate these problems more? So, like, i- i- it, it's a sense of trying to stem the problem at the, at the root cause instead of reacting to it, trying to fix the problem the other way. We're always behind, it's always more expensive when, you know, it's like, you know, uh, if we're talking to the public health officials, they talk about preventative, uh, measures, right, for, for, for public health, that this saves so much money. So, this is all I'm saying when it comes to, um, dealing with the trash, because Counselor Zabbert's right about this, is that it is a problem, people are upset about it, I think, and, and they, and they, they want to see a change. My point is that in the, with the limited resources that we do have, can't we try to be a little bit more, you know, anticipating these problems? Having somebody out there making sure people are picking up their trash after the game? And somebody writing, how much is the fines for litter? I'm just saying, like, we, we, if we don't hold the public to a certain standard, if we just let people do whatever the, you know, whatever they want, and we're going to clean up after them and we're going to pay the bill to do it? I mean, there's something wrong with that. And I, I think it's, it's, it's a, it's a matter of educating the public to pick up after themselves. And to have some common courtesy, have some pride in where you live, have some respect for your neighbors. These are not hard things, but we, as the city, should ask our, our residents to do this. I mean, I think it, you know, let's curb the problem so we don't have to spend as much money on it, because, you know, i- it's basically, you know, these people are forcing us to spend more money than we should. And, you know, i- i- it's not that hard to pick up your beer cans. And maybe we should have some enforcement to make sure people aren't drinking in the park. It's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty, you know, it's, it's not that hard.
So, we have tried to, I mean, this issue of litter, we have tried to be proactive. We just spent money this past year on public service announcement, did a fairly professional, uh, PSA that we've put out with residents in the community, uh, to try to aim at this point of getting residents to think about taking care of their own property, taking care of the city's property. So, we have tried. I mean, what you're suggesting would require some people present on those Sunday afternoons in those parks, uh, and.
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm just submitting to you that it might be cheaper to do that than to spend the additional money to, you know, clean up a big mess. If you have a smaller mess, it, it's a lot cheaper to clean up a smaller mess than it is a big mess. So, I mean, it's pretty simple. I think that, I think that this is a, this is a common sense type of thing that we ought to be looking at instead of just, you know, here's the problem, how, how are we gonna, how are we gonna, you know, pay for fixing it? I mean, I mean, the public's gotta do their part. And, and, you know, we can't, we can't do it all for the public. I know that we want to all the time. We bend over backwards for our residents in, 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 I mean, the ways that we bend over backwards for the residents are manifold. We need to, we need to expect a certain level from our residents too. And that means, that means some sort of something there to enforce the rules so they know what to expect. And if they can expect to just throw their beer cans in Vogel Park all over the place and it's a, it's a damn mess, they're going to do it, because nothing's going to happen to them. Nothing's gonna, you know, hey, nobody's going to say anything to you.
So, I think what the, just to surmise and get, get going on into the budget, uh, Councilor Taylor brings up similarities between the PSAs that are for drunk driving and also, but there's also, uh, traffic stops along, uh, by state police to catch people who are doing it. So, it's not just education, but enforcement and maybe more patrols, a combination of having the police officers do a, a patrol to these areas that have become problem is part of the pro- is part of the solution, not just, again, adding more, um, cleanup crews, but. Councilor Robinson?
I'll, I'll be brief. I mean, when we look at a job, we, we look at how long it will take us to do that job. You know, if we, we, if we have a crew out there for eight hours, what are they really doing? I mean, somebody got to be the alpha dog and be able to say, well, we need to get in this park, it's going to take us an hour and a half to clean that park, and we're going to get to the next park, whatever it's going to take, another hour, hour and a half, to be able to put a dent into what we're doing. So, we actually must need somebody to follow up and watch over whether or not they're actually doing the job.
Yeah, I mean, so, so, um, that was a lot of questions, obviously. The, uh, um, I think you all know me by now. I mean, I, I, I'm very passionate about beautification, I, I, I'm very passionate about trash, uh, a- and, uh, um, what we have done, uh, to, to, to quell the, the issue of trash in, in the last four years, it hasn't just been, you know, ju- just making a, a PSA. I mean, we, we, what we have tried to do i- i- is, is, is a citywide effort of, of, of raising the bar, right? So, it, and it's been from, you know, from, uh, from the banners that say, you know, moti- uh, motivational things, i- i- it's, it's making sure the lights are, are working, right, they in the streets a- 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 and on Broadway. I mean, a- a- it's, uh, it's responding to each and every call, uh, on, on potholes, right? I mean, i- it's, it's everywhere. I mean, right, because what, you're absolutely right, we're, we're trying to raise the bar. But, uh, unfortunately, you know, the reality is, is, is that, uh, um, you know, I live in Amherstil, a- a- as you all know, a- a- and Mario O'Malley ha- has, has three, three full-time employees from, uh, uh, from DCR who, who, who are staffed there. A- a- and, and they sit in that little house, right? A- a- and they mow the lawn, they, they walk around a few times, right, a- a- and pick up litter, right? I mean, a- a- and it's their responsibility to, to, to make sure the park is clean. It is, is, uh, three employees a- a- and a supervisor. The, uh, uh, for us, I mean, a, a Vogel Park, uh, Counselor Taylor, i- 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 is, is probably, uh, uh, one-quarter as bad as Highland Park, right? So, so Highland Park is, 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 is a mess. So, every, every Monday morning, I mean, it, it's like a, like, like a bomb hit it, right? I mean, a- a- and, and we try, you know, we, we try to, 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 uh, uh, to educate and enforce and talk to them, you know, but, but it's a balance between, you know, between making the parks available, right, a- 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 and encouraging, uh, athletics and, and, and encouraging community, right? I mean, a- a- or, or just shutting them down. I mean, i- i- if, if we kicked out a group, uh, each time they didn't comply, right? I mean, it, it would create a, a hostile relationship with, with, with the city administration a- a- and, and the parks, uh, uh, and, and the people who are using the parks. So, uh, uh, trash i- i- is a very complicated issue. I mean, i- i- and it has been studied by, 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 uh, quite a number of people. I mean, it, it's, it's a standard of living, uh, uh, um, you know, uh, it's, it's how you measure quarterly of life, but, but, but it's very complicated.
Am I, am I understanding that if we ask people to pick up after themselves, that that's going to create a hostile?
No, no, so, so I walk Broadway.
I'm not being, I'm trying to be, I just, you know, I understand, uh, Highland Park gets a lot more use than Vogel Park.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but I guess what I'm saying is, is that, you know, there has to be some sort of personal responsibility for people. And so, you can't always use the carrot, sometimes you have to use a stick too. And, and that doesn't mean that you go around beating people all the time, okay? That's not what that means. It just means that, you know, if someone's there, at least giving warnings, if not writing tickets, then, you know, they understand that they cannot just throw their trash on the ground when there's a perfectly good trash can ten steps away.
Sure.
I'm sorry, every single human being should be able to do that.
I couldn't agree more.
And that's not a high bar, okay? So, so that's, that's all I'm saying. And that, and that it seems silly that we go round and round about stuff about paying for, for things that we shouldn't have to be paying for because of a lack of personal responsibility on the part of the public.
I, I'm not disagreeing at all with you, Counselor. I'm just saying that in addition to that, I think I'm suggesting that our parks, not just Vogel and Highland, but all of our small little parks, and there's a fair number of them, could use a little more care and invest a little more money is not such a bad thing. Hence the reason why I have this proposal before you for Monday night, to hire a landscape contractor to cover the city for the summer. You know, I, I, I would like to see how that works, to see if it can pop our parks a little bit and.
So, I would, I would react to that by saying, I would be much more apt to agree to that if I saw this other stuff being done as well. So, that, that's all I'm saying, a- that, that if we know that there's going to be a ba- baseball game being played, why don't we send somebody there at, at, you know, when, when the game's going on or when the game is over, to, to make sure that people are, you know, policing the area? I mean, I mean, you know, it's, I don't think it's that hard and it's not going to cost that much money to do. It's, uh, it's, you know, pretty prophylactic to me.
So, we, I certainly have conversation with the commissioner about doing that.
Thank you.
Have a meeting with them and say, look, if you can't pick up after yourself, then we're going to suspend you for the use of the park until you get the message that you need to pick up after yourself, all right? I mean, that's, you know, somebody got to be the alpha dog in the room.
Yeah.
If it's not us, who's it going to be?
Yeah, the, the, so just to be clear, I mean, we don't do, uh, permitting or, or licensing of, of the parks, right? I mean, we, we just clean up the mess. So, I mean, so, the, Omar, who, uh, who, who works for, for B. Cravada, I mean, he, 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 he is working hard a- a- at, at developing these relationships, right? I mean, a- 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 in Vogel Park in particular, I know, he, he's been there the last two Sundays. I mean, but, uh, I don't think he, his full-time job is, is to be at, at Vogel Park or Highland Park, right? I mean, uh, the, if, if enforcement i- is something that, that, that we're looking for, I mean, absolutely, I mean, we, we'd love to hire, uh, more people to do that. But, but right now, the only people that, that, that is, is, uh, Omar managing, you know, the, the licensing and, and permitting i- i- is, is one person, a- a- and it's Omar.
You know, it might be less than spending the money on, on the other, but I, I, I already made my point, I don't want to belabor.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not committed to recommending to you a parks division. I, it is something in my mind, I've had conversations with the commissioner about it. But, in my prior life, when there was a event at a field, the parks division of DBW showed up on overtime, and when that event was done, they cleaned up the field, so that on the Monday morning, it didn't look like a bomb hit. That's what a parks division does.
We used to have a parks division.
And look, I, I've been here six years and I haven't proposed it yet, so I have as mu- I'm not putting the blame on the council, you know, it took, the light do- has dawned on me the last year or so that, you know, this is maybe an area that needs a little more attention, then I have been prepared to give it, but it is something now that I'm really thinking about.
I don't want to belabor, I just, I question sometimes, how come some particular parks that are under our care, um, don't look as. that are under our care, um, don't look as, as, or look more abused than, say, you know, Mary O'Malley Park, and I mean, it's both heavily used, it's, but used heavily by Chelsea families and such, so it's just, I'm curious that, um, none of the, none of the attention that we give our own parks, surely, um, this, you know, the, the, the contract that, that we have with Roca, they don't, they don't have anything to do with that area, so it has to beg the question of, why is it that a park that is as used as any other park, except for activity, except for, you know, field use, um, ends up looking, I would say, in a much better shape come Monday morning, whatever day of the week, than the other places, what, you know, what's the, what's the difference here?
But Mary O'Malley, we just heard, has three full-time people that maintain that area.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, so, no, no, I'm, I'm compar- well, no, I was, I was asking for a comparison because our resources don't go there yet, it seems to be in a much better shape, that's what I was asking.
They actually have their own resource there available, and that they don't have to worry about any other park.
Okay.
So it gives them easy grasp on it. Now, and some of the other parks is that you can say, uh, over by, um, Eastern Ave and Volk Park or in Highland Park, it's what people believe they can get away with.
Right.
So if they believe they can get away with what they get away with, whether it's drinking in the park, leaving the evidence behind, and no repercussion, they get away with it, it adds up, and it makes our parks what we discuss it.
Right.
But if we have some restrictions or some expectations of those people to, without a fee, without a license on it, they just feel that it, you know, it's the city's property.
And, and it's also like, when, when you walk Mary O'Malley, it's, it's always clean, right, so, so, so it, uh, uh, throwing trash there, you, you, you feel worse than, than if you're walking by, you know, one of our streets, and, and there's litter all over, right, so, so, to, to answer the, the Council President's, uh, uh, question is, i- in terms of usage, you know, Highland Park sees, sees, sees probably three thousand people, you know, on, on a Saturday, I mean.
Yes.
If you go there on a Saturday, I mean, i- i- the, the entire soccer field, i- i- it's, it's full of people, right, I mean, a- a- and, you know, the, uh, Roca's not coming on the weekends, right, a- a- and, and we only have, you know, uh, typically four guys who are working half a day, right, a- a- and, and we've told them, you know, focus on the downtown, right, so, so these, these DBW employees are, are, are picking up trash i- i- in the downtown, uh, uh, seven days a week, so if, if, if we could park, you know, two, three, or three employees at, at Highland Park, right, I, I can assure you that, that it would look like Mary O'Malley.
Well, that's, I, I won't even get into it.
Councilor Lopez?
Highland Park belongs to my district, and, uh, I actually have been going over there on Mondays, and I went a couple of times and cleaned up myself, and, and what Councilor Taylor said is, people drinking and urinating right on the side, and actually, Councilor Cooper and I got a couple of calls last week, people are defecating and, and on the field, so imagine, you mentioned people drinking, never mind going to the bathroom right in there, what we need to do is, uh, we need to enforce, we need to do something. Tom, maybe, uh, once in a while, on a Saturday or Sunday, maybe have a police officer go by there, so have some presence, so people can see that we are very serious on this. Not only in drinking and do the, all the activities there.
Absolutely, we'll talk to the chief.
And I, I think we, we talked about this before, they probably did it a couple of times, and that was it, we, we need to do, do this, probably every, every weekend, and also have someone, like he was saying, from DBW show up there and, uh, so they can see there's presence from the city. Also, people who get permits, talk to them, if, even if they don't make a mess, but if there's a mess after they leave next Monday, don't give any more permits, we gotta do something, we gotta, because Highland Park is a mess. I go there all the time, and, and I see what they do, drinking, leave trash everywhere, I actually was gonna, I was gonna ask Fidel if they could remove the dumpster there that is in, in that area, because what, what I see is contractors throwing debris in there, it's not really for, for the park, for the, for the users, for people who go there and make trash and just dump it there, now, actually, trucks, I have seen myself, trucks from construction companies dropping debris right in the dumpster, it's fill-ups, and in two days, that dumpster is filled up. So what we need to do on this is enforcing, maybe ISD, maybe DBW, police, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Onto the next part of the budget, snow, snow.
Not as controversial as trash.
What, I'm sorry, what page is that?
One twenty-four.
One twenty-four, okay, DBW, snow removal.
So this, this one is actually, uh, uh, pretty straightforward, it, it's, it's level-funded every year, you know, we don't increase it, we, we spend what we spend, and then we, we, we do a deficit spending request at the end of the year.
So Counselor, as I, I will mention to you, as I did on Monday night when Cheryl Watson was here, on the judgments line, that this is also a line that we have the legal right to go into deficit on, however, we'll be approaching you with a deficit expenditure request of about three hundred thousand for this line, so next week you'll get all of the orders, we were asking for approvals to supplement for our deficit lines, the judgments line is one of those, the snow and ice is another, and there'll be a couple of others as well.
And how many are, and do we, how many contract services are there?
We only have one, uh, and that person does the, the silver line, so we handle all of the streets, it's just when, when, uh, when we took on the responsibility of the silver line, we decided to, to contract that out entirely. With, 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 with us taking the responsibility of, uh, of Eastern Avenue, we're going to do the same, we're gonna, uh, uh, contract out Eastern Avenue as well, and we'll keep our streets, we'll, we'll keep our old streets, okay? Great, we'll move to solid waste, um, so, uh, solid waste pays for, uh, for trash removal and, and trash disposal, uh, in terms of the salary line, that pays one individual, and, and it's Mike Sandoval, uh, uh, in, in terms of expenses, uh, just, just highlighting two, two, two items, or actually, three items, one is, it's advertising, we're, we're, we're asking for a thousand dollars more, two, continue the, 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 uh, the education process, uh, making, making flyers, making, uh, more videos, and, and, and just keep, uh, to, to continue the, the education process. In, in terms of, uh, trash pickup and disposal, uh, I think we, we mentioned to, to the Council that, uh, we, we have extended the, the contract with, with, with what was Russell for one more year, so, so our, our trash contract is, um, uh, is now up on July first of twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Um, and, uh, we were able to, to, uh, keep, keep that increase at, at, uh, at three percent, uh, but this covers two components, one is the, the hauling, which is the, the trash company, and then the, the disposal, which is Resco, wheel liberator. The, the other line is, i- is the Public Works Program, so that, that line, uh, uh, has been funded, you know, for, for, uh, many, many years, it was started by, by, by City Manager Ash, a- a- as a way to, to, to pretty up, you know, the, the city, uh, we're, 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 uh, really trying to focus on these efforts, whether it's, i- 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 is the welcome to, to Chelsea signs, I'm sure you all saw the, the planters on Broadway, we're, uh, we are, uh, trying to encourage, uh, residents to, to, to do planting in, in front of their houses, like, we're, we're gonna launch a, a, a micro gardens, uh, effort this summer, and, and so we're, we're asking for the Council to, uh, to fund that at a higher level, uh, uh, in order to, to, uh, to expand our, our beautification efforts in Chelsea.
These, uh, that, that, that increase of fifty thousand dollars, is that for materials or is that labor, payroll, third-party contract, what is that?
So no labor, we can't, uh, we cannot pay for labor out of, out of this line, so, so it's all gonna be either purchases at, at Home Depot, like, uh, um, like the flowers that we, we purchased, uh, last weekend, were all bought from, from Home Depot, uh, it's gonna be for materials like wood, you know, to, to make the planters, uh, it's gonna be for things like signage, you know, uh, 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 it's gonna be, uh, for painting supplies, for example, the, the CET, uh, the community engagement team, uh, uh, planted the area at the end of Marlboro, so we, we supply them with, 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 with the materials, and, and, and they do all, all the work. So that's one example where, where, where we're being proactive, and, and, and I really think that, that, that is creating that, that engagement where, where people are going, are gonna start to, to, uh, to take ownership in the process.
Is there a, create a detail that could provide a scope of what's limited, because it just seems it's a big jump from the actual expenditure of eighteen-five to sixty thousand, so just, uh, would like to have a better idea of the limitations or actual restrictions on that, what that can be used for. Quickly, I didn't see, under what, under what budget is the Arrow contract for the street sweeping?
The sweeping is in streets and sidewalks.
Okay.
In the maintenance citywide line.
I thought it was in streets and sidewalk early, but that was actually.
That's what I asked.
Um, so it wasn't, because I, I thought when we were doing sidewalks and streets and sidewalks, I saw the one forty-five, and that was, uh, contract services, um, I saw that was for Roca, but I didn't see in streets and sidewalks, the contract for Arrow, where would I have found that?
So that is, i- i- is inside of the, the maintenance citywide line, so the, the maintenance, uh, uh, citywide line. Just give me one second.
So under one twenty-one?
Under, uh, page one twenty-one.
Page one twenty-one.
Maintenance citywide. Maintenance citywide.
That is the street sweeper program?
I'm sorry?
Street swe- so maintenance citywide is, again, street sweeper program, the adopted budget, uh, twenty-one was six-ten, it was four ninety-seven, the actual expenditure, and we're going up another fifty thousand dollars, is that because there's an increase in the contract with Arrow, or other costs or expenditures that use, is on, is that citywide maintenance only Arrow?
No, it is not, so, so that, uh, the maintenance citywide line, it, it's, it's a catch-all for us, so, so the, the, the contract with, with Arrow sweeping, that, uh, they do all street sweeping in, 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 in the city of Chelsea, it, it's, it's, it's a three-year contract that's advertised, uh, publicly, publicly procured, uh, it, it's a, a two hundred and five thousand dollars a year, two hundred and five thousand dollars a year, so, uh, 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 two hundred and five thousand dollars, out of that, uh, uh, six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is street sweeping. That line also covers all, all the line painting, so, so we, we, we do, i- i- we, we, uh, contract out, i- i- a lot of line painting, uh, uh, so that line, it, it, it also, uh, uh, covers that, and, uh, uh, it covers, uh, 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 guardrail repairs, it, it, it covers, uh, traffic signal maintenance, it, it covers, uh, the contractor who, who fixes the streetlights, there's a lot of contracts that are, that are incorporated into that line.
It'd be helpful to provide us with, uh, an idea of what those expenditures are.
Sure.
So that, it, it's, I mean, it's just one light item, but there's a lot in there.
There's a lot in there.
Um, and it'd be helpful for us to understand exactly, so that we can understand why it's going from nearly five hundred thousand dollars to up to six seventy-two, um, you know, there's, there's a significant jump there of nearly two hundred thousand dollars from what was used in FY twenty, we all, I know we don't have what FY twenty-one was, but that's a two hundred thousand dollar jump to the proposed FY twenty-two.
Yeah.
I just want to understand.
So I can tell you, Counselors, for fiscal twenty-one to date, we have spent over four hundred and forty thousand on that line, and.
Four hundred and forty. So we're still under, we got two months left, we'll still be in the.
We have two months, I'm not sure, because the bills, so this, this doesn't tell me when the last bills were processed, so if you have any bills that are several months old, they'll be coming in between now and the end of June, and we actually extend that into the first couple of weeks of July to capture all of our prior year bills, so I can get a better idea by checking the line, um, later, but we, we can report on that afterwards.
We can give you a break, there's like six major contracts.
Okay. Not a problem. No, again, I, 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 I'm looking at the expenditure, I'm looking at what the request is, I'm seeing a large difference there, and just, uh, I, maybe there's something that's gonna be unexpected or planned for this year that wasn't in the past, other, more line painting, I don't, I, again, I don't know what it is, but I just seen that there seems to be a large jump. I mean, if I go from twenty to now, it's nearly, uh, you know, fifty percent jump, not a ten percent jump.
Yeah, uh, uh, keep in mind, Counselor, that, that you'll, you'll see a trend in, in all of, of FY twenty, right, I mean, we, we shut down in March, uh, of, of twenty, twenty twenty, so, so I mean, so, um, you know, we, we, we essentially, uh, uh, pulled all the guys off the road, you know, and, and all the contractors off the road, right, so, so we lost, uh, uh, one quarter of a year in, in FY twenty.
Okay. And, uh, Counselor Robinson?
In regards to the solid waste, when this company comes into Chelsea every month, does it report to the city ad and open up their trucks to make sure that there's nothing in those trucks before they hit the Chelsea streets?
They do not.
Huh?
They do not, they do not.
They do not?
They do not.
Is there any particular reason why they do not?
No, it, it, uh, it's never been done before, so, so the, the, as, as long as I've been here, that wasn't the part, the, the practice, we could certainly do that.
Well, I think it's, I think it's important, speaking from experience, and.
Sure.
My family had a rubbish company, that every day, the inspector, before our trucks could go out in the city of Boston, they would come and have us open up every truck to make sure there was nothing on there that the city would be charged for.
Sure.
And I just think it should be a good practice for us to be able to figure that out, we don't know if they are coming here, and if the truck is half-loaded or not-loaded.
They would get in trouble for that, but, but, yes, absolutely, that's, that's, I, I understand what you're saying.
Right, 'cause then you gotta watch.
Sure.
You know, what the tonnage is that, you know, we've been paying for, and whether there's a big jump in, in the tonnage or not.
I understand, we'll look into that.
So, you know, the questions, uh, you can continue on to the next.
All right, thank you. So we are going into, uh, structures and grounds, um, and, and for the sake of time, I mean, the, uh, you'll see a similar, uh, similar scenario there with, with, uh, with salaries, uh, no increase, uh, in the, um, in the expense line, the, the, the major components are, are building maintenance, uh, as you all know, we, we have an older stock of buildings that, that, uh, need, need constant attention, uh, so we, we are requesting for, uh, for additional funds there, um, and, and it's a similar picture for, uh, for the rest of the items. If you have any questions, let me know.
How much of the work is actually contracted out here? I see only twenty-one thousand dollars, but obviously, it, it's, it's not this crew, I wouldn't imagine that it's just this crew here that is doing the tower, is it, is, are those, those aren't city, those aren't city employees out there?
No, sir.
But I'm just curious as to, um, the, you, you have leads craftsmen and then three craftsmen, so what is the, the regular salaries is of the three individual, or four individuals, I take it?
So on, on page one thirty-two, you'll see the breakdown, right, of, of.
Okay.
So we have, uh, Mario, who, who's been here, uh, for a long, long time, uh, he, he, he is, uh, he's, he's awesome, honestly, I mean, he, he keeps the, the buildings running, uh, and then we have, uh, two more people, uh, uh, who, who are hired at the moment, and, and we do have an opening, um, and, uh, so we do a lot of the, the light maintenance in-house, right, so when, when we are, uh, painting an office, when we are, uh, replacing a carpet, uh, things like that, when we are, uh, are, are doing, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, uh, simple renovations, we, we do it all in-house. The, the senior center, I, I encourage you to, to stop in, we, where we are, uh, are painting the entire building, so, so from, from handrails, you know, to, to, to walls, uh, we're changing all, all the toilet fixtures in-house, we're doing all the floors in-house, and, and, and I believe that it, it's a very good, good use of, of these funds. When, uh, uh, we typically, uh, contract out work that requires a, uh, more, more complex renovation, so, so all the renovations that are downstairs, like the, the, the city clerk's office, uh, the, the, the treasurer office, obviously, the, the, uh, the city hall tower, which, which is a multimillion-dollar project, uh, all of those projects are contracted out.
So is it my understanding, you're actually, then, are you adding one more personnel? Are we increasing personnel up?
No, sir. I, i- i- it's a position that is, that is vacant. We had, uh, an employee who left in February, Christian Nova.
We've also got a, um, building craftsman position that's not being funded. I'm sorry, not building craftsman, custodian position.
Yes, so Roy, Roy Crenshaw, I'm sure you, you all remember Roy, he, he retired, I mean, I, he, uh, he was eighty-four years old, uh, he had been retired from the Navy, actually, you know, at, at a young age, and he, he, uh, at, at eighty-four, uh, the pandemic was just too much for him, so, so he, he, um, hung the boots, and we are not planning on, on, on filling that position.
And we're, um, I, I don't know what the, there was a discussion about the number of greeters. I noticed the greeters are here. So, uh, we're maintaining two greeters, is that the same amount that we had pre-COVID, when we were, had city hall closed, and now when we expect, um, to go back to, um, not having to keep the door locked and just having an open-door policy, um, is, is the, the two part-time greeters, is that the same amount that we had pre-COVID, which we expect to have?
So, so pre-COVID, we had two employees, uh, and it was Barbara and, and, and Kedley, so, uh, um, you know, the, the greeters, we, we started this program, uh, uh, two years ago now, a- a- and, and I recall when, when I started here, you would see residents, you know, wandering the halls, right, and, and, and looking for, for how to pay a ticket, right? So, so I think that the, the greeters, in, in particular, in, in the time of COVID, ha- ha- have, have really shown their value, right? I mean, they're outside, they're, they're engaging, uh, uh, residents, they're, they're helping out with the forms, uh, and so, so, uh, two, two of those greeters are, are, are permanently funded. There is, 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 is one additional greeter, uh, Jocelyn, who, who, who's, who is funded out of the, the COVID line, but that is gonna be a temporary hire, and, and we'll, we'll terminate, we will terminate that at some point this summer.
Is the greeters are a contractor or are they workers?
They're employees. They're, they're part-time employees with no benefits.
So, um, so that's all I do is be in what you explained. So aren't those pretty much like contract positions, though?
No, they're, they're, uh, part-time employees, uh, and, and they're, they're, because they work less than nineteen hours a week, you know, they're, they're, they're part-time employees.
So they have full insurance and...
They don't get any, they don't receive any benefits because they work less than twenty hours a week.
Yeah, that's why I ask, because I thought the contractors, that's a way that they would end up in that, um, bracket, where they get no insurance or no coverage or anything, so...
Yes, they don't ha, they're not entitled to any benefits. They're less than twenty-hour-a-week employees. And as, as Fidel said, we do have a third one that's funded through COVID funds that will eventually, those funds will dry up, but, uh, I'd like to keep the third person around for just a little bit, at least through the summer. They, as Fidel said, I, I think they've been extremely helpful to people coming into city hall. They've actually helped out, as I think you heard, uh, Jeanette say, helped out the offices quite a lot, because they divert a lot of traffic to the offices, so I think they're helpful. We'd like to keep the, uh, third person on as long as we have those COVID funds.
Councillor Taylor?
What is other expenditure?
So that is, uh, um, we pay real estate tax, uh, for three-twenty-four, um, marginal street.
That's what that is?
Yes, that's the real estate tax.
Okay. Is there, I mean, is there a reason just why it's classified as other expenditure and not real estate tax?
I don't know.
That might be, that might be something for next year.
Because there was no other line in the series that fit at the time, so, so we rarely have to, I mean, I can check the accounting standards, we wouldn't want to call it real estate tax, because that would raise other questions, so...
Right.
So, um, I can, I can look to see if we can title it in a different way to make it a little bit easier, but we have to be careful about that.
We're responsible for that pursuant to our lease agreement with, uh, Enterprise.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, I think we're ready to move on to the next segment.
Which is sewer, water and sewer. Come on up, Lou.
For those still with us at home, we're moving on to sewer and enterprise.
So Lou Mamolet is our sort of acts, he's the deputy, uh, public works commissioner, but he also acts as sort of the water sewer drain superintendent, so...
Can everyone hear me?
Yep, thank you very much.
Um, I guess I can start with, um, just saying good evening to the council president and the, and the other city councilors. Um, as you know, my name's Lou Mamolet, I'm pretty sure I know everybody, um, all the councilors. I serve as the deputy commissioner of public works, uh, which basically means, um, my, my job in part is to support, um, Fidel sort of at the right hand, uh, to keep everything moving, um, on the public work side. Um, I also serve as the city engineer, so I try to provide technical guidance from a professional engineering perspective on, on all capital projects for the city. I also oversee the water sewer and drain operations, uh, also known as WSD, um, and a big part of my focus for the last, uh, twelve months, and I, I would say then, um, sort of for the foreseeable future, is to, uh, continue to, to bolster and support the development, uh, of a city department, um, that was contract-operated for, as everyone knows, for a very, a long time, I think twenty-eight years. The Water Enterprise Fund, um, the, the funding sources for, for WSD generally come from two sources. The majority of these funds is Water Enterprise Fund, which covers the water distribution system, um, and, and the job of that system is to deliver drinking water and support firefighting efforts. Um, and then the other, the other fund is the Sewer Enterprise Fund, which covers our combined sewer and drainage systems, um, and that system is responsible for collecting all the wastewater and stormwater runoff, um, and conveying it to, uh, Deer Island Treatment Plant. We have a combined sewer system, so that's a, a unique challenge to the city that's, uh, different than most other communities, more like Boston, Cambridge, and Somerville than, than suburban communities. Um, I guess so, I, I, if following the, uh, sort of the, the script outline that we were asked to prepare, um, um, outlines sort of the, the, the major differences in the budget from FY, um, from FY twenty-one going into FY twenty-two. So the, uh, I guess to start the, the, the overall budget, um, the overall budget has an increase, um, in the, for the sewer division of four-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand dollars, uh, which is roughly three-point-four percent. The, the water, uh, both the sewer division budget and the water division budget, um, essentially share and, and split fifty-fifty all the salary, um, uh, salary items that comprise these budgets. So what I describe now here for sewer basically re, um, is similar, uh, or basically replicates what is listed in water. So the, uh, the salary side, uh, this year has a budget increase of sixty-three-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. A little over, a little over thirteen-thousand dollars of that, um, represents the average raise, uh, increase from, um, from our union contract, um, negotiations, and that average raise is roughly two-point-eight percent. The, the salary increase also includes, uh, promotion of, uh, of one of our D-one operators up to D-two, and that represents a twenty-eight-hundred-dollar, um, increase. It also includes, uh, promotion of our insist, assistant superintendent up to the superintendent position, and that's a thirty-four-hundred-dollar increase. One, one thing to note is that, um, when, when that position gets, um, uh, approved for, for promotion, we're not backfilling the assistant superintendent position, so the only net increase is the thirty-four-hundred dollars associated with the, uh, salary increase from one position to the other. Uh, there's about a seventeen-hundred-dollar increase related to things like licenses, clothing allowances, longevity, and sick bonus. And, uh, another, uh, there's another forty-seven-hundred dollars, um, associated with step increases for, for various positions. Um, those are limited, um, in nature, but, um, there are some, some employees in the WSD group, uh, that will get step increases, and that basically rounds out the balance of the, uh, I'm sorry, there's one, there's one other position, uh, there's one other increase, and that's, um, the hiring of a construction manager, um, and that has an in, uh, that has a, adds thirty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred dollars, bringing the total salary increase in the sewer division to sixty-three-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. One thing I would like to point out about the hiring of this construction manager is, um, it's, it's clear that, um, you know, as originally envisioned for the, for the development, um, of WSD and the takeback from contract operations, we knew that we were gonna have, uh, sort of a certain level of service expected of us, um, and a, a certain amount of, of work that was required to be performed. You may recall, or those that were on the, um, city council at the time, that we developed a, um, sort of a staffing plan for the full build-out, but came in with the idea that we would sort of ramp up, um, and as it turns out with, with the, uh, with the pandemic, it actually worked out well that, that we had worked sort of on that ramp-up approach, um, so that, well, we didn't have to lay anybody off. But part of that approach included sort of adding one more employee each year over a, a, a number of years to sort of get to that full ramp-up over, say, a three- or four-year period. This represents that first employee. Does anybody have any questions related to that, before I go to the, continue?
In general, um, we see, uh, a lot of the, uh, work out there with the, the local contractor, or, I guess the one who has the answers to the RFP is Tufts. So my question is, overall, um, when you combine the budget of the water and sewer, um, and takeover of the manning, and the amount, uh, spent on the, uh, service that is being provided by, with Tufts and then doing the work, um, where do we stand in comparison to, um, having White have been a previous contractor? Because you, it's, it's, you, you are adding both, so I'm just curious, where, where's the comparison? Where do we stand?
Yeah, even with, so even RH White had outside contractors helping them, but even with all of that work that we have maintained, where we have some, uh, depending on the size of a pipe that's problematic, that breaks, we will outsource some of the work, just as RH White did. But even just considering the whole, uh, all of the expenditures we're making in this, we're still spending considerably less than we were spending prior to this takeover.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, I mean, we, we knew that, that, uh, taking over water and sewer was, was, was a big jump, right, for, for, for us, uh, for the city, for the council, uh, we, we, we really appreciate the, the, the trust, uh, uh, and, and the commitment to, to, uh, uh, to do what, what, what we thought was, was the right thing to do for our community. Uh, uh, most of the cities around us, uh, uh, and certainly all the cities that, that we researched, uh, uh, key, uh, handle the operations of, of, of water and sewer in-house. But, but we knew that, that, uh, you know, we, we, we took over, uh, uh, water and sewer on, on July twenty-second of twenty-twenty, uh, so we are just coming to the first, the first year, so we, we, we certainly knew that, that, uh, this, this question was, was gonna come up. So what, what Lou, uh, uh, has, has, has prepared is basically, um, is basically a, a snapshot, right? So when, when we, uh, came to you with, with this proposal, we, we provided, you know, the, the spreadsheet that, uh, was, was part of that process. Uh, uh, in that spreadsheet, we, we committed to, to, to being three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars lower than, 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 uh, than RH White, right? So, uh, uh, fortunately, or, or unfortunately, uh, COVID-nineteen hit, and, and, and we had to actually, uh, cut lower. So, so the, the initial proposal, uh, uh, included, uh, the, the hiring of thirteen individuals. With, with COVID-nineteen happening, uh, uh, our city manager, uh, uh, obviously, uh, came to us and said, hey, it's, it's not possible. So we, we, we cut that down, and, and in FY twenty-nine, I'm sorry, in FY twenty-one, we, we, we started up, uh, our, our, our water and sewer operation, uh, uh, essentially with, with, with three employees down, right? So, so Lou, uh, uh, is the acting superintendent, and, 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 you know, he, he's on site on the water main, the brakes, uh, he, 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 he answers calls from, uh, uh, from sewer backups. So in, in front of you, there's two spreadsheets. So one of them i- is, is the one that was, was submitted with, with the original, uh, proposal, right? This is, this is something that you should have on your files, and the other one, uh, i- 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 is, is what, uh, uh, what actually occurred in, 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 in our fiscal year twenty-one. So it, and if you, you know, we can go through as much detail as you like, but the, the, what I wanted to, to, to highlight i- is that, uh, if we follow the, the same logic, right, uh, on, 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 on the back page of, of the attachment, uh, you'll actually see that, that, uh, that, that projected, uh, uh, savings has gone up to seven-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars. So the, the, um, you know, and, and that, that has had real impact, uh, to our residents. So in, in FY twenty-one, uh, in FY twenty, we were able to, to, to reduce the, the, the potential increase, uh, to our water and sewer rates to one percent at, at the request of the council, right? So, so you, you, you clearly stated that, uh, you know, the, the, the water rates were, were going to up, up too high, we, we throttled that down to one percent. Uh, uh, in FY twenty-one, with, with COVID-nineteen, we, we kept everything at, at a zero, right? So, so, so the, the, the water rates, uh, for, um, uh, for FY twenty and FY twenty-one were incredibly low. In FY twenty-two, you have the, a, a communication in front of you that, 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 uh, i- is going to keep the, the water rates, uh, significantly, uh, lower of an increase than, than, than it would have been if we had, uh, if we had, uh, um, uh, kept RH White.
Okay. Councillor Robinson?
So do we actually save three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars?
We saved more than that, councillor.
Saved more than that?
Anyone else? Uh, okay, so you wanted...
One other question. Do we have, do we have any injuries this past year in water and sewer?
Say that again, sorry?
Do we have, do we have any injuries in water and sewer this year?
So, um, we, we had one injury, uh, uh, and, and it was Wigberto Correa, who, uh, who, uh, uh, he was actually injured, uh, uh, around Christmas time. So, so it was actually the, the, we, we received a call from the, the Chelsea Housing Authority that one of their manholes was, was backed up, you know, a- a- and, and us being, you know, being helpful, we said, absolutely, we'll, we'll be right there, even though it was, it was the day before the holiday. Uh, Wiggy was with RH White, so, so he was with, with RH White for a long time. He, he's, he's a Chelsea resident, he's on Addison Street. Uh, uh, so he, he, uh, he operated the VAC truck for, for many years for RH White. He, uh, y- you know, wi- he, he was hurrying up, it, it was before a, a holiday, uh, uh, and, and, and the, uh, the hose for the VAC truck, uh, 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 basically got loose on, in his hands a- a- and it whacked his, his, his leg. Uh, he, he, he received a, a lacer- a laceration, he, he was out for a couple of weeks and i- i- and he came back. That is the only, only injury, knock on wood, that, that we've had in, uh, this, this entire time. Wigberto Correa. Yep. He goes by, by Wiggy. We call him Wiggy.
I'm done.
Okay. Trying to remain to the, to the, uh, budget itself. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, I didn't hear about the person getting injured, that's why I was wondering why we didn't hear, know, um?
Counsel, try to use microphone.
Oh, sorry. Can you tell me what work or what repairs you couldn't get done due to the COVID-nineteen this past year that we're not seeing reflect this budget?
So, the, the, um, you know, uh, uh, to be extremely blunt, uh, uh, counselor, we, when, when we took over, uh, uh, you know, and RH White left the building, if you will, uh, uh, we found a lot of Band-Aids. So, we,
Right.
We found a lot of issues that, that, that had been e- either Band-Aid, you know, or, 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 uh, pushed aside for a capital project, right? So, so, uh, uh, I would say that in the last, last twelve months, we have done more than we have in the past. So, I mean, so a- 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 and, and I think our, you know, you've, you've heard from, if, if you're a, a resident, whether it was on Sagamore Avenue, you know, w- i- i- a major project on Everett Avenue, on, on Addison Street, on, on, on Tremont, uh, uh, the other day, we, we, we essentially, uh, received a call about a, a sewer line being, being backed up and, and, and it started o- o- of, of making a, you know, a Band-Aid, we, we went ahead and, 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 and replaced the entire sewer o- 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 of Tremont Street. And we repaved the, the, uh, the street afterwards. Um, so, so I would say that, that, uh, uh, we haven't missed a beat because of COVID.
Okay, the reason why I ask, because I know you guys was all excited once the takeover was about to go into effect. And then COVID hit, I just wanted to know if we were not seeing everything that you were trying to get accomplished here due to COVID, because COVID slowed a lot of folks back down. And I know there was some, some other stuff, maybe Luke can speak on.
Yeah, no, so, so the, the, the one thing that it, it, it really slowed us down on was, was water meters. So, so we had a, a very, very, uh, aggressive plan to, to, to upgrade all of our water meters, uh, uh, in, in the city. But with, with COVID, obviously, we, we didn't wanna go in, 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 into the homes of residents, uh, uh. So, so we, uh, from the month of, of, of maybe, you know, uh, uh, April of twenty-twenty to, to, uh, maybe February of, of, of twenty-one, we, we kept water meter replacements to, to a bare minimum. So, it was only emergencies. If, if we got a call to, to replace the, the water meters, we, we went ahead and, and, and did it. They, uh, uh, prior to that, we, we were doing about a thousand water meters a year.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Taylor?
So, so part of this, uh, of the goals and initiatives is to, is to replace, re- replace the sewer, uh, where, you know, there, there wasn't a lot of, you said you, you found a lot of Band-Aids and, and, you know, not much was done for, for decades in this. And so, this was one of the major challenges, I think, that you guys were facing, um, as far as basically not having, you know, a, a, a big problem, um, with pi- with pi- big pipes or whatever it is. So, can you just, can you just, uh, I know that, you know, it's just been a short time, but how, how much of that is still to go? Do you, do you, do you, or how much did we get done in the last, you know, percentage-wise ballpark?
So, I, I think, um, it may be difficult to give you the exact answer that, that you're looking for, but, um, what I would say is, everything related to infrastructure is based upon life cycle of the asset and of the, you know, sort of level of service that's expected.
Right.
And we have a city that has essentially eighty or ninety percent of the pipes underground have no useful life left. They're, you know, they're over a hundred years old.
Right.
And, um, uh, that, that number is actually probably more like eighty percent because there has been a fair amount of capital projects that have been done, say, in the last twenty years. But there was a gap in time from, say, nineteen forty-five to nineteen ninety-five where virtually nothing was done. I think the only major infrastructure for water or sewer was right after the fire in nineteen seventy-three. And the city went around and installed a whole kind of series of fire loops. They didn't really, they didn't bother to connect anybody's house to them. Uh, most of them were set up sort of as a fire protection system. I- in many ways, uh, uh, it, it wasn't even the right system to put in, but after, you know, twenty percent of the city burns down, nobody's thinking about small pipes, they're only thinking about big pipes. But there was really no hydraulic analysis that, that sort of justified that. Uh, it was just the next size up on the rack, twelve to sixteen. In terms of how things have been attacked since then, um, you know, you've gotta think of the, sort of the, the history of how the city has kind of proceeded since nineteen ninety-two, when the, when, when it went into receivership. You know, a, a lot of things were just O and M-driven and things just weren't getting done. And so, RH White comes in and, you know, pretty much saved the water and sewer operation. And the, you know, they, they deserve a lot of credit and the receiver understood what needed to be done. And that really was a great contract for the first ten years. But the next ten and, or next twenty-year contract really didn't rise up to meet the city's level of service. The, the costs went up three-point-two percent every year, but the, what was being expected of them didn't. And so, it, you know, things were, you know, going against each other on the curve. I- in terms of dealing with the, with, with the infrastructure, you know, capital projects, a lot of the capital projects that were, were driven, were driven around two things. One is, you know, increased O and M for RH White. So, essentially RH White said, if the, the more, the more things we have to go and fix, we'd like you to go and replace them, like, we'd like you to ma- for the same dollars, we want the city to make less work for us by fixing a pipe we co- keep going to maintain. So, the city was paying to design and construct projects that essentially made RH White's work go down. But the price didn't go down.
Right.
Right? Uh, the other aspect of it was, uh, as Alex was talking about previously, was, um, revitalization of the city. Um, so, things like building a hotel or, uh, you know, fixing something that was dilapidated.
Everett Avenue.
Everett Avenue, you know?
Stumps.
Yeah, there was a lot of Massworks money put in, in there. And so, it was sort of to dovetail with the revitalization of the city. But there was no master plan from an infrastructure perspective, life cycle, environmental compliance, combined sewer overflows. Um, one of the challenges, when I got here, working with Fidel, was to try to figure out what's the next capital project. But there was no roadmap. And that basically led to us developing master plans for combined sewer separation and water infrastructure. And we've been, basically been following those, and now we've merged those into other initiatives, like reimagining Broadway or Beecham and Williams, you know, places where we get money from outside.
Right.
And we take some of our own money inside and merge the ideas of a plan. And so, ta- I guess, I wanna frame that because that's the approach that we take every day, is, is we're not just doing this by throwing dax at a board, we, there's a plan. In terms of how you spend money and where you spend it, you've gotta think of those, that life cycle. We, we, we will never be able to get caught up on life cycle at the rate that we're going. We would have to, we would have to do twice as much in capital projects every year to make a dent in it. But right now, we're following capital plans that are driven by things that are regulatory, like closing CSOs before the federal government lets MWRA off the hook and then turns and sinks its teeth into the city. Uh, those are the things that, 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 that drive us. In terms of percentages, which I think comes back to your original question, is roughly, I would say roughly seventy percent of the city is still served by combined sewers. And that largely exists in, uh, two very, very, or three very critical areas. Each one of them has a combined sewer overflow. And those are the areas where we're focusing our, our largest effort, so we can knock those areas down. But it's not just, you know, we have combined sewers in, uh, in the Prattville area, but we've got a low enough density and enough capacity in those systems that we don't have sewer system overflows into the street. And we don't have combined sewer overflows because we're not overflowing into, into Chelsea Creek or Mystic River. In the downtown area, uh, Eastern Ave, marginal, up to, up to Broadway, in, in the more urbanized, older areas, we have those. And so, that's really where our focus is going to be over the next ten to fifteen years. We wanna close all those CSOs and we wanna take that number of, say, th- uh, you know, seventy percent and try to get it down to somewhere around fifty percent. And then we have a managed program over the next, say, thirty to forty years to get everything else as the life cycle and as the money kind of affords, without making the water and sewer rates go through the roof.
Okay, so let me follow up on that. That did answer the question and it ga- gave a lot of context to, to what exactly is going on and why.
Okay.
So, I guess my next, my next question, because I, I actually, you know, I think about this sometimes about, you know, what, what's gonna go wrong at the city, you know? Like, what are we in danger of and what do we need to, you know, it's a triage of problems, right? So, uh, you know, when we, I think, spoke last year, it was, it was like, this is a pretty major problem that we could, you know, have flare-ups here or there. We never know what we're gonna do, so we gotta get on this and, and try to get it, uh, taken care of so we don't have, you know, some catastrophe happen or, or, you know. I guess what I'm asking is, is that, at what point do you think, in your best estimation, that we're gonna kind of reduce our risk of, of these things happening? You know, so, so, so we can kind of, uh, you know, get our arms around the problem, the, the, the major problems that are, that are really at risk of, of, of exploding?
Yeah, so, so, um, oh, since, since nineteen ninety-six, I mean, the, the, the city of Chelsea ha- ha- has, has done a lot of work, right? So, uh, uh, i- i- in the, in, in the last five years, we've done even more work, uh, whether it's Maverick Street or, or Highland or Essex, you know, Shertliff, uh, uh, whether it, it's, it's one mile uh, worth of pipe, uh, 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 on Broadway that, that, that's, that's a hundred years old, right? I mean, it was, so, so to, to, to lose earlier's point, uh, uh, I feel like, I feel like, you know, if we continue to spend to the level that we're spending, twen- twenty-thirty i- is, is the year where I'm saying, okay, you know, we, we've closed our CSOs, the, uh, the older pipe, you know, our, 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 the, the fires are out. You know what I mean? We'll, 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 uh, uh, continue, of course, because what, what Lou was, was speaking to earlier i- is, is a fifty-year plan, right? So, that, that's, that's more like, you know, like, uh, uh,
Yeah, get, get, get in it, get in it more completely under control.
It's the roadmap, it's the roadmap to completely separating the sewer system.
But, but it sounds like, it sounds like you're saying we got ten or fifteen years of, ten or fifteen years of, uh, you know, doing the best we can and crossing our fingers.
Absolutely, absolutely. It, but it's also, yeah, it, it, it's also, I mean, you know,
That's a current spending.
Correct, correct. It, it, it's also, you know, when, when, when we have an issue on, on a pipe, you know, we don't Band-Aid it, we, we,
Yeah, go and replace it.
Exactly, I mean, we don't, you know, because, uh, uh, Everett Avenue is, is one example where,
It's just kicking the can down the road, so, no reason to do that when we have,
And, and you're making a hole every six months, right? I mean, there's no need for that, right?
I just wanna make one more, one more quick point, just in terms of sort of the cost-effectiveness and how we're managing things. The, 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 the differences in the last four years and more specifically, the differences in the last, say, year and a half in terms of how we're operating things is, we've put ourselves in a position to have the tools and the capacity and the staff to do this correctly. And a, a perfect example, two months before the contractor for a capital project mobilized to Beecham Street, we had a sewer collapse on Beecham Street. We had our emergency repair contractor go out. And instead of fixing a small piece, they realized this thing is in trouble, manhole to manhole. So, we replaced it manhole to manhole. The money that we spent there is money that we won't spend rehabilitating that section manhole to manhole on that capital project. In the past, the city had no capacity to do that. Not, 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 not in a way that would be able, we would be able to do it quickly and efficiently and certainly not in a corridor like that. But because we've taken a different approach to managing it, in other words, instead of writing a big fat check and having low accountability to a, a private for-profit operation, we brought it in-house and we staffed it with people who care more. And we've, and we put other tools in place to do that. And I think that's really, that's a, that's a big part of what's, what, what, what represents the difference between now and even a year and a half or two years ago.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
So, we do have one last section, sorry, go ahead, counselor.
I got one last question.
Sure.
I got a little confused prior when I was looking over some numbers in regards to, you know, the water department. Now, um, was there any bills that came in after we took over the contract? And will that affect our bottom line? And, and should I be expecting some bill to surface, uh, either at the end of June or somewhere in July that we have to go back and pay X amount of dollars because a bill showed up that we didn't anticipate or count on that was old to the previous contract?
So, just, just, uh, uh, just recently, uh, uh, maybe, uh, two months ago, we, we got in writing from the, the CFO of, of RH White that, that, uh, no, no further liabilities were, were owed to RH White. There is one exception, a- a- and, and that is, as part of the, the, the buyout, we, we, uh, we worked out that the, uh, the, the last two-hundred-thousand dollars of, of the buyout was, was gonna be given in, in very small monthly amounts, right? And, and that was to, you know, to, to keep them i- i- in, in the, in the game, if you will. So, that, that, um, that small amount is, is incorporated into this budget and the expenses.
So, it's, and, so it's incorporated, so what wa- what was that actual figure that it was? Was it in the hundred thousands or two-hundred thousand?
Two-hundred thousand, two-hundred thousand in cash that we spread out over two years.
Okay, well, you spread it over two years, so,
Eight thousand dollars a month.
I'm looking at it and, and, and my perspective, when you tell me you're gonna save three-hundred-and-fifty thousand and then now we're gonna spread that amount over two years, I'm figuring that, to me then, that really wasn't the savings that we had anticipated.
So, so the buyout, I'm sorry, so, so the buyout of this essentially saved the city the delta from what the original contract, which would have been, is somewhere in the neighborhood of one-point-eight million dollars. So, I think the idea was, an- any monies that we had to spend to get out of this contract so we could get into a phase where we're actually saving money, was money worth spending to, to, to get to that point? That, I think that's how we viewed it.
Yeah, I think our annual savings are really far exceeding what we were estimating, including over and above whatever we paid them to get out of the contract.
Well, I, 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 I understand that point. But when you say that we were gonna initially save three-hundred-and-fifty thousand and then now we're gonna gerrymann, you know, X amount of dollars over the next two years, that doesn't show me that we actually saved the amount of money that we said we were gonna save in the first that doesn't show me that we actually saved the amount of money that we said we were going to save in the first year. And, you know, and if I'm wrong, then explain it to me.
But I, I guess I'm saying, our actual savings from last year, we think were seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So even if you, if you subtract the hundred that we were paying them in eight thousand dollar increments, we still believe that we saved over six hundred thousand dollars.
Right, thank you. That was my last question.
Final question for me. Um, recently in the, uh, news, been hearing about the communities around Wayland, Natick and so forth with some, uh, water, drinking water issues. Uh, I know we depend on, uh, the MWRA. I'm just curious just to know, um, if the new regulations or the new measurement requirements have shown up any differences here with our dependence on the MWRA water and where our drinking water quality is at this point?
So the MWRA is, is all over this, actually. Uh, and, and they, they have, they have, um, have issued many, many calming statements, if you will. So, so ultimately, the, the responsibility of, of water quality for, for Chelsea, Revere, Everett, Boston, I mean, it, it, it falls on, on the MWRA. So, so they, uh, we are required to, to, to test weekly for that, right? I mean, a- a- and, and that's publicly available data. I mean, a- a- and they're working really hard to, to, uh, uh, make sure that the, the water quality of their, of their water is good. Okay.
The, the, the discussion related to those communities, I think, is now focusing on a desire from those communities to partner up and become member communities of MWRA. The, MWRA has, uh, a substantial capacity, uh, to be able to provide. Um, and as things like CSO sewer separation, um, continues, it's going to free up capacity at Deer Island Waste Water Treatment Plant. In terms of the, the reservoir and the storage, there's something like six years' worth of average daily demand in those reservoirs. In other words, if it didn't rain for six years, the, the water would still show up in downtown Boston. So they have plenty of capacity to sell. Um, they have growing capacity to treat. And so, you know, the, getting more customers in their system does make sense. It, the goal is to, to try to alleviate some of the burdens of the member communities by sort of making a bigger denominator and spreading it around. And I think that's, and communities are starting to realize that there's economy of scale by partnering up, um, as opposed to taking on the responsibilities and being starved for water in these watersheds that don't have impoundment the way they do.
Is that actually taking into account the changing, uh, population patterns in the last couple of years where communities around the greater Boston area have increased their residential units? I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, those projections were-
So, I'm sorry, I didn't make the cut.
I mean, there, there's, there's, there's been a dramatic increase of residential in and around the Boston area. So I'm wondering if that's actually the case with their projections that the Quabon Reservoir does in fact satisfy or is the, you know, can take in, uh, the, uh, the population or, or, or rather satisfy the population requirements and, and have that six-year, um, back, backflow that you say, oh, demand and can take on four or five more communities, um, without knowing the actually twenty-twenty census numbers. I'm just, it's just, it's, it's, I think there are contracting, there are conflicting numbers there. I've just, I mean, I don't want to delve into it, it's not a budget number, but it's just a side, a side discussion to say, wait a minute, how can, how can the MWRA say that they have capacity for so much more and accept more communities when we don't actually know and we're seeing so much development in our, in and around us, that's all.
I guess the only thing I would say is, is that six years of capacity in, 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 in storage as a factor of safety, I mean, is, it, it is wildly unnecessary. Um, however, when the, the concept of this was first developed, we had six-gallon flushing toilets, we had factories that were once-through water cooling. Um, we generated wastewater in factories at, you know, at a rate that blows the mind. And so we're not quite as wasteful as we used to be. And so I think that's, you know, I think, I think that plays to the ability of, of MWRA to expand. I think the regulatory requirements are really driving a lot of communities, um, as well as the environment. Um, I know I used to manage another water system, um, prior to coming here and we were relying upon wells. And when we had a drought, we basically had to tell people to slow down how much water we use. MWRA, it's, we're, they're open for business. And, uh, in terms of the rates and things like that, it's, it's a zero-sum game. It's the cost of their operation divided by how many gallons of water they sell. And so, um, you know, we went up this year partly because other communities went down. So we're expanding, we're, you know, Chelsea's growing in population and units and so, so is our, so is our assessment, because it's a zero-sum game. Um, it's, they take a pie and they slice it up and we're, we're, we've got a bigger slice of the pie. And it's, there's really, there's no magic to it. You know, obviously, uh, it's, it's what drives the, the rates.
Okay.
So.
I think that's it for questions.
Central billing?
Central billing, yes.
One last one, sorry.
One last.
This is page one forty-three and one forty-four.
One forty-three, this, this one should be quick, it's, 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 it's a two-pager. So, uh, uh, salaries, uh, it, there's two employees, Teresa and Bianca. Uh, Teresa has, has been here for, for, uh, a long time. Uh, uh, no, no other increase but, but contractual increases, uh, uh, in terms of expenses. Uh, it, the, the only increase in expense is, uh, five hundred dollars for the cost of sending water bills.
Uh, Counselor Robinson. No questions? Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have, uh, we got you. Okay.
You're very responsive when I, whenever, uh, you know, there's a question or a problem or something, you guys always call me back and always, so it's, it's a great, it's a great thing, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Now, we got to do legislative, hold on. Legislative and then, um-
Do you want me to wait to introduce legislative?
No, go right ahead.
Okay, so, I just want to clarify a potential point of confusion. If you go to page thirty-six.
Thirty-six, people, page thirty-six.
Page thirty-six, this is the legislative budget. The percent of change is showing zero and that is because the change is point zero one percent. There's a twenty-four-dollar difference. If you look at the adopted budget for FY twenty-one, it's two thirty-eight, seven forty-six, while the proposed budget is two thirty-eight, seven twenty-two. It's gone down twenty-four dollars. The reason for that, I had mentioned last night that there are fifty-three weeks in fiscal twenty-one and in some budgets it will be more pronounced when we break that out into fifty-two weeks this year than in other budgets. So this is one of the budgets that it is very pronounced. We have, if you look on page thirty-seven, you have fourteen thousand dollars for the eleven counselors. Last year it was fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy. So the two hundred and seventy times eleven offsets the two increases that both Paul and Fatima have. So it's, it's accurate, it just shows a zero when it's actually zero, point zero one percent of change, because it's such a small number.
The rest stayed the same.
Uh, the rest stays the same and you also fund in your professional services line the outside audit that's done every year. And so that's wrapping up very soon. I think the CAFR, I will have a final on that sometime next week. And the other reports are forthcoming. They've been delayed this year as a result of COVID. The, um, independent auditor has had, uh, a lot of work to do and we've given him everything that we were able to give him, so he's almost finished. We had to ask our funding authorities for some extensions and we received those. State of Massachusetts had a number of communities that asked for extensions, uh, so they all went through without any issues.
Okay. Any questions?
We just have regional school and the cherry sheet left.
What cher-, what page?
Regional school is one sixty-eight.
So the regional schools, I'll just mention a couple of things, um, here. We have, a bulk of that expense is for the Northeast Regional Vocational. We have, uh, a drop in enrollment, a potential drop in enrollment from two hundred and fifty-six students in twenty-one to a proposed two hundred and thirty-eight students in fiscal twenty-two. I don't think that's final yet. We have preliminary information that we received, um, back in April, so we still need to get some final numbers there. In addition, the school department has told us that there are three students that will be enrolling in other regional schools. The Medford Tech has one student, the Essex Agricultural has one on, on a waitlist. And the third, we were notified of a week ago, was Minuteman Tech, that one person, one student will be enrolled in. So those three costs have not yet been finalized. So what we've proposed in our budget here is a number that we have our best guess on. It's, it's, um, based primarily on what the Northeast Volk number is, but there's some, some potential change with the other three, one of which is on a waitlist and one of which isn't final.
My recommendation is appropriate this amount. It's possible next spring we might have to come back for an adjustment if, you know, but even the Northeast number is likely to change in the final state budget, uh, because they always get a little more money in the, uh, House and Senate. So this number's not likely to be exact and, but I just don't know what it'll be. This is the best estimate based on what Northeast gave us in April. So if we appropriate this, we'll be close enough. It's possible next June we could come to you with an adjustment.
Going to one seventy on its cherry sheet?
And this is just, these are the numbers right off the governor's, uh, cherry sheet proposal. So the top part, uh, of expenses has stayed the same and will stay the same, I assume, in the House and Senate version. It's this bottom piece that's going to change. Uh, the charter school assessments and the school choice assessment will change. And, uh, we won't know those final numbers until the final state budget is approved. But what will happen is what has happened here for the last three or four years, which is when the final state budget gets approved, it's likely that the school department will have, oh, more money. And so they will come to you with a, uh, request for a supplemental appropriation in September to cover what additional money they're getting from Chapter Seventy, net of changes to school assessments. And they'll ask you to appropriate that. It will have no effect on our bottom line because it'll all be based on new Chapter Seventy money that they got in either the House or Senate version of the final state budget. So I expect in September, the Hou- the school department will be before you. I don't, I, I expect the number's going to be around six, seven hundred thousand. I think the House numbers, they ended up with about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more net. Uh, I don't know what they're going to end up in the Senate with, but s- at, at some point in September, they'll come to you for a request to grab that additional money from more Chapter Seventy.
The mosquito control, is that actually money that we pay, but is probably spent in other areas of the state?
No, we do get, uh, we're covered by, I think, Middlesex's, uh, mosquito control, believe it or not. And they do work in the city. They, they do the catch basins and they do, uh, uh, they don't really do spraying here, maybe rarely, but I ha- I haven't really seen it in my tenure, tenure, but they do the catch basin work, so that's our assessment.
What is this RMV non-renew charges, the, the drop that we've, uh, you know, the expenditure is much lower?
There's a very specific reason for that that I know, but I can't remember what it is. But you get assessed for some work that the RMV does to mark licenses. And it helps us because when they're marked, people have to be driven here to, uh, pay their bills. And, but they charge you for that service. And, uh, this is a number that I think fluctuates based on how many markings they do.
We can check in with Patrice, uh, she'll, she'll know this, the city treasurer gets this information from the state.
So just through, if I recall then, this is that, uh, for example, we have tickets issued to a particular vehicle, uh, they don't pay it, we send it to the RMV. They, they, they stop that vehicle, that driver from renewing their license and say, ah, until you go to Chelsea.
Go to Chelsea.
And pay the ticket, you can't get your license renewed and then you finally pay it.
Then it gets reported to the RMV and then we get-
And I think the only times that, uh, that doesn't work is when it's an out-of-state license, I believe, or, or, or out-of-state plate. Because then there's no recipro- reciprocity on that one.
I don't think so. And then I, there's a couple of ways you can, some oddball ways that you can maneuver your way out of this, but it's hard. And so most of the time, we benefit greatly from this, as every city does, from this marking system, because when they go to get a license renewal or a plate renewal, RMV says, go pay your tickets.
Come to Chelsea to pay your outstanding balance.
And then we have to notify the state that the tickets have been paid.
Okay. What's that, uh, Counselor Robinson?
Kind of, I missed the whole piece on the regional school. Um, if you can give us an update, what the status is in regards, so I know that they were looking at a new building? And if that goes, and if that goes ahead, what effect it's going to have on us?
So this, this requires a whole lengthy conversation with the council at some point. I included it in my financial projections. If you looked at my PowerPoint that I sent you to look through, it, it's one of these, you know, things to worry about in the future. So right at the, so unfortunately, I, I have no doubt that this school is going to be approved, even though I will recommend that this council reject it. It will likely be rejected by a handful of the cities and towns, including Revere, Sawgus, Winthrop and Malden. But then they have a statutory option of putting it on the ballot to the whole district. And, you know, it's just a majority vote of the registered voters of the entire district. And those things almost always win because there's enough cities and towns in the district where the things are real benefits. So if you're like a place, I don't want to pick on anybody, but a place like, um, Winchester that sends ten kids there for a hundred thousand dollars, those ten kids are going to go to a brand-new, state-of-the-art facility. So for them, that's a great deal, will give you an extra hundred and our ten, fifteen kids. But for Chelsea, the project, so this is a three hundred and seventeen million dollar facility. Uh, the state's picking up, I think, hundred and seven, uh, two oh six, so there's a hundred and seventy-seven million. And the city of Chelsea's share is two point eight million a year for thirty years. That's way above what we can raise in any given year. So we've raised this concern with the federal delegation, the state delegation and A and F. And, uh, I don't have a solution yet, but it's certainly on everyone's radar that there's got to be a fix for this problem. It's probably going to mean that the state's going to have to come up with some greater subsidy than normal. And we're sort of saying, look, you've got this unique, one-time expenditures from the federal government here, you've got this federal infrastructure bill coming. This is your chance to do something for these communities and we'll see what happens. Yes, yes, yes. So we'll see. I mean, that, that is a, that is a looming problem out there that I have identified in my financial projection. It will likely first hit the cities, if, if all goes, I don't want to say if all goes well, if all goes badly. It might, it, it likely could hit the city's books in FY, as early as FY twenty-four, but I think more likely in FY twenty-five. So that is something, and I will have, we'll probably need to have a special subcommittee meeting on this. Uh, it's a little early. The Mass School Building Authority is supposed to consider this project for final approval, uh, perhaps as early as the end of the summer. Uh, we'll, so we'll, I'll keep an eye on that.
Thank you.
All right, everyone? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. City Manager and your staff.
Okay, thank you all.